The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
And just for benefit of members of the public, I want, we want you to know that you can view the board agenda and handouts as well as minutes from past meetings by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on our district at the top and then Board of Education on the left. And then on the next menu on the left, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. We also, tonight, will provide our community with two different opportunities during our meeting to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibit the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board also will permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on as noted on our agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members are prohibited. At this point, I have indication from one person that they would like to speak before the board tonight, and so I'll call him up, Rob Miller. And Rob, if you're at the podium over there, right Jeff? Is that where you want him? Yeah, okay. Oh, you need to grab a mic, yeah.
Hello? It's not.
Is it?
He'll turn it on.
Oh, he has to turn it on, yeah.
Hello? Okay, thank you. My name is Rob Miller. I live at 131 South Van Buren Street in Green Bay. And I basically wanted to address a couple procedural suggestions based on my dealings with the school board over the last, oh, I don't know, year and a half. So I'm going to give you a couple of examples and then present my observations based on those examples. Example one is the so-called engagement session, what I term a meeting with regard to student achievement held at West High School, maybe about a year ago. And there we had, I don't know, six or seven school board members with their backs to the audience. We were lectured at for about a year, an hour. And I actually submitted about a three-page observations and about 15 pages of documentation which were never addressed at the meeting, although Dr. Langenfeld did write me subsequently. What I'm suggesting is that having the school board, or any local government, basically do an imitation of potted plants is not the way to conduct government business. The school board, as I envision it, should be engaged with its constituents. They are the decision makers, the policymakers of this enterprise, and they should be willing to talk to the constituents about the very subject matter under discussion. And there are very few issues that are more important in this area than the issue of student achievement. So my suggestion, the bottom-line suggestion, is we need more interaction between the school board and its constituents. In this case, the meeting was presumably properly noticed as a meeting. There was no, there's no legal impediment to the board speaking to the constituents. And it's not the role of the staff to basically speak on behalf of the board. The members of the board should speak directly to their constituents. We are not supplicants. We need, we need not beg to talk to the body corporate that rules this district. We are not subjects. We don't have to kneel to get some time to talk to the body corporate. And I distinguish this between individual board members, or even staff members, who are freely and readily available, and the actual decision-making that makes, that's occurring in the dynamic of a group meeting. And when I talk about the body corporate, I'm talking about the board meeting as a whole. And that's a different dynamic than somebody whom I call up and speak to for five minutes or so. The second example is the NOAA Plan, the so-called alternative plan, that was submitted by me as the editor, and it was actually some ideas by some former teachers. That had a hearing, and we were politely heard out, and then it just went into the ether. There were, there really weren't much in the way of objections. I think it withstood any scrutiny. And I don't have any problem with it being voted up or down. I just think it would be appropriate, as every other local government body would do, to have it, have the committee voted up or down, and have the school board voted up or down. And if I'm given a chance, and the other people are given a chance to be heard, and we go down if it's defeated, that's all we can ask. But when we put in a lot of time, and there was a lot of time put into that plan, and nothing happens, on a very urgent issue, on the destiny and future of Washington Middle School, that's very disturbing. I don't have any problem in, as I said, going down on a vote when I have a chance to speak. My problem is that we're not getting that chance. I mean, and I'll quote John Stuart Mill, who said that all silencing of discussion is an assumption of infallibility. And I think the board is silencing discussion. If you want the flip side of the same idea, the marketplace of ideas to this board is clogged, if not constricted. And as I said, this is totally unlike what the county board would do, what the city council would do, or what other suburban local governments would do. So I've respectfully made my points. I have not yielded or put forward any invectives or insults. I think you should consider my suggestions, and I'm making them at the request of a couple board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board this evening? Seeing none, then we will start our agenda. First, I'd like to state we have all seven board members present tonight. I'm joined, we are joined at the table by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld to my immediate left. We have members of the superintendent's cabinet around the table, and two intercity student council members, Jamie Barbio, Barbian, sorry, who is president of the intercity student council from West High School, and Camden Zarniki from Southwest High School. Welcome, Camden. Camden, feel free to raise your hand and ask questions and give your input if you have something you'd like to say. So at this time, I, we will begin our teaching and learning work session, and that will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have several discussion items this evening. And the first will be an update from American Institutes for Research and their work at Washington Middle School.
As they come to the table, I know that Associate Superintendent John Magus and the team have been working very hard, and he'll introduce you to our guests here tonight, who are part of the team and part of that transformational effort at Washington Middle School. It is around continuous learning, both together, and I think tonight is an opportunity for all of us to learn all of the work that's been going on at Washington, and obviously just beginning the work, and being able to move forward, working in partnership to transform our skills and the tools that we currently have in our toolbox, all based on the board's strategic roadmap, a clear vision, a clear mission, and various efforts around accountability that will be shared as well in the presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Magus, and thank you for your work, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to have this investment in Washington Middle School and to be able to provide this important update.
Sure. Thank you for having us tonight, and I'd like to start off by introducing the team of people before you. We have Dr. Judy Wiegand, Cindy Olson, Ted Johnston, and Cindy Barber. And I'll let them, Catherine, sorry, to Cindy and Ted. I'd like, if you could just briefly introduce yourself.
Sure. Judy Wiegand, Executive Director of Secondary, and I work very closely with eight of our schools, four middle schools and four high schools, and it's been quite a great pleasure, actually, to do this work with Washington Middle School, with Cindy, as well as the AIR team.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cindy Olson. I'm the principal at Washington Middle School, and again, I would echo what Judy said about working with AIR, the partnership that we have. Some great things are happening.
And I'm Ted Johnston. I, I'm Ted Johnston. I've been at AIR now for five years, and I specialize in turnaround coaching for math content. I've worked in Virginia and New York, and a little bit in Rhode Island, and I'm really glad to be with the Washington Middle School team in Green Bay.
Good evening. I'm Katherine Barber. I'm the Managing Director of the District and School Improvement Center at AIR. I'm a former turnaround principal and have successfully turned around a school in urban, suburban, and rural, and earned a credential as a school turnaround specialist at the Darden Curry Partnership for Educational Leaders, and happy to be here tonight to support the team.
Excellent. And so we wanted to bring this first report to you, this September report, with some context, and that's part of the reason why we wanted it as part of a work session, so that we can gain feedback from the board on the reporting process, the metrics, and then bring that information back in our November 19 meeting, our regular board meeting, as well as bring the October report, which would be finished by that time and ready to share. So really, that is our intention. Again, we wanted to make sure that there's a clear context to the work, because just a report without explanation, it was something that we wanted to make sure that that was shared in depth. Again, we'll be facilitating the information, discussing the steps we've taken thus far, but we also wanted to share a draft of our success metrics, because it's really important that we're, that we define what is it that we're going to measure, how is it that we're going to see if Washington is successful. And it's important that we have agreed-upon criteria for that success, because if we don't have agreed-upon criteria, that's something that can, can be loose and ill-defined, so we'll go in greater depth with that. We also want to make sure that we have this work session opportunity to take your input on those metrics. So if there's something we're missing, something that the board feels critical, that we monitor, that we're able to consider that and include that in our final, final draft of our metrics. And again, we plan on making sure that all of the information, all of the documents shared tonight, and those that will be shared in the November 19 meeting, that those are shared publicly as well, that we were preparing the work throughout the weekend and throughout the day, and making sure that it is as timely as possible, as important. But really, it was about the context of being able to receive input from the board on this work, on the communication plan and on the metrics, so that we can make sure that they're shared effectively in the future. Thank you. So you have a paper copy of the presentation with some of the linked reports in front of you? And we have-
We also have the PowerPoint available to us in our email.
Yes, and we shared the PowerPoint this afternoon. And we have a mouse that is not working. Sorry. Thank you. See if this one reaches. All right. So why are we here? We're here to provide the board with an update of the measures of success and plan next steps for the partnership between Washington Middle School, AIR, and the district as we move forward. Katherine?
All right, thanks, Tom. Just for those of you, just as a reminder, Ted and I do work for American Institutes for Research, or as you may have heard us refer to ourselves as AIR, AIR. We, the organization is a nonprofit, and we're really focused on improving the outcomes for those, especially those that are disadvantaged. Are you, or can you-
Excuse me, Katherine, can everyone hear in the back? Okay.
Good. We're good.
Thank you. Just wanted to double check.
As I said in the introduction, I'm the Managing Director for the District School Improvement Center. That is a part of AIR, and we are focused on school improvement efforts, specifically building systems and capacity builders. So we focus on providing customized solutions that are specific to the local context that improve student outcomes. So we deliver high-quality services, we meet the client's needs, and then we're really focused on system-building, capacity-building, to improve the outcomes for students. As Ted said, we've been a lead turnaround partner in multiple states. We've provided support to over 40 districts, over 800 student outcomes, and have had some really good results with improving schools and outcomes for students. Our work is based and grounded in research. We are in research and application organization. Our school improvement framework is based on what we call these gears that you're looking at. And you can see that up in the upper left-hand corner, leadership that drives change is the biggest gear, and that's where we do put the most of our emphasis, is on supporting and coaching the principal or the leader at the school that drives the improvement efforts. And then that in turn turns all those other improvement elements that you see there. I think one of the most important things here is to think about school turnaround, school improvement as a pathway. And we developed this improvement pathway based on implementation science and the phases of implementation. And so what we have found in our school improvement efforts is that many people jump in at the end of what we would call our pathway, where they're talking about sustainability and innovation, without having done the proper work at the front end on the reflecting and the preparing for the school improvement effort. Washington Middle School participated in a very intensive needs assessment process, which is the preparing and reflection part of it, and then in turn developed a plan. And then now that Washington Middle is in the launch phase, so they have a really well-thought-out plan based on the outcomes of the needs assessment, and they're at the point where they're implementing their improvement efforts. That then in turn leads us into what we call the continuous improvement cycle, which is where, they'll talk about it some more tonight, further in the presentation, collecting data, monitoring that data, then in turn to identify supports for the teachers, for the principal, and then make adjustments along the way. As we go through multiple cycles of the continuous improvement cycle throughout this year, ultimately, we're all leading and aimed at sustainability, and which then in turn can spur you off into innovation. We like to show this slide, because every system is perfectly designed to get the results it gets. So when you, when we think about Washington Middle School, and we think about the needs assessment, the needs assessment helped us to identify why people keep driving around, if you can't see it, there's a bar there across that road right there, helped us identify why, why we keep driving around the bar and not address the bar in the middle of the road. So through that needs assessment, it really helped Cindy and the team develop their school improvement plan and the specific initiatives that they're going to implement to improve the outcomes for students. This is a partnership. So it's AIR and the team composed of Ted, Doug Fireside is the ELA coach, and Donna Wortham is the leadership coach. It's an AIR partnership, working with Cindy and her team at Washington Middle School, and working with the district support team as well. So this really is the three legs of the skull, of a stool, that are all working together to address the needs at the school. So it's shared accountability, and we'll all celebrate the quick wins, and we'll all celebrate the outcomes at the, at the end of the year too, as well.
And if there are questions along the way, feel free to ask as well, or comments.
Roger?
Okay. I have a few questions in general. When you reference the image about, with the bar in the middle of the road, have you determined what the bar is?
It's based on the outcomes of the needs assessment?
Okay, so the needs assessment actually happened, right? Okay. So have we determined, is it determining what the bar is first, and then rolling out the plan? Or have we determined the bar, and we're rolling out a plan hoping to figure out what the bar is?
Can I answer?
If you could ask the question again.
Yep.
And you can answer, but I'd like to hear the question.
No, I like, I actually like the image. I actually think is a very interesting image, and I think it tells a story. But I just want to make sure I understand, are we looking to figure out what the bar is, or do we know what the bar is from the needs assessment, and then we're rolling out a plan based on what that bar is?
We've determined what the bar is based on the needs assessment. And the needs assessment was done this summer during the co-interpretation process, so the, the bar is instruction, assessment, and relationship. So those three categories, and we'll talk more in depth about the metrics that we're using within those three categories.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood what the bar was.
Sure. And I would say as well, the defining of the bar, the initial work that we do around co-interpretation gives us a deep perspective as to what the problem is, but it's an ongoing process as we go through cycles of inquiry to further define the problem. If we're deciding our approach is to go under the bar, then we have to do deeper assessment of what is the height of the bar, what is the strength of the bar. So as we go deeper, we continue to define and better define the issue.
Just one more question. When you say "assessment," what do you mean exactly by that?
So it's assessment that's done in the classroom, common assessments that teachers use, and then our benchmark assessments that are done throughout the school year. The STAR assessment is what we use. We do that three times a year. And then the lagging indicator would be our success on the Wisconsin Forward Exam, which is given in the spring, and then we unfortunately don't get those results until September, sometimes October. So that would be the ultimate metric that we're using as well. That's under assessment.
Any other questions? Here we go. Okay.
So the support that AIR is providing with Cindy at Washington Middle School comes in three different work strands. So the first one is around turnaround leadership coaching. So Cindy has a former turnaround principal assigned to her, Donna Wortham, who unfortunately had to be in another state today, or we would have had her right here with you tonight. So Donna comes a couple times a month to do shoulder-to-shoulder coaching, actually walks with Cindy, works with Cindy, and does classroom observations, and reviews data, problem-solving, thought partnership, job embedded, professional learning. And then in between those visits, is also there to support Cindy with virtual support to, which could be conference calls, or they can Skype each other. That turnaround leadership coaching is a competency-based coaching approach, which means that it's based on what we know successful turnaround leaders do and think to lead a school improvement effort at a school. And so this is based, again, on research and evidence, and Cindy participated in a self-assessment on the competencies, set a coaching goal, and that is what Donna and Cindy work on every time that Donna is here. And once those coaching goals are accomplished, they go back and revisit and reset a goal, and then that work continues on. Do you want to add anything to that? No? Okay, all right.
I actually will add something. I think sometimes we have a question around, what does that mean to have coaching? Why do we need coaches? What a strange term. But in a city like Green Bay, where we have a variety of coaching needs, we have specialized coaches. It's one thing to be a football coach, but it's another thing to have specific expertise and being able to give key input and indicators to a specific position. And while we have our executive directors who are highly skilled, we want to make sure that we're getting the absolute best advice on turnaround processes and coaching related to leadership in turnaround. Later in the presentation, we also talk about how this is not meant just as an effort to turn around Washington, but it's an accelerator for the system as a whole. As we see what is, what is occurring, we see the practices, we build upon those practices in other schools, and we take them and share them elsewhere. We'll go more deeply into that as we proceed through.
So as a former turnaround principal, I participated in two years of training at the University of Virginia, and had a coach assigned to me the whole entire time. And could not have imagined having led a turnaround effort without a coach. And it is someone who is highly skilled in understanding organizational change process, but it's also someone that helps you navigate through a very complex and complicated world as well. We come from a coaching model that we believe that everyone can benefit from a coach, and everyone can get better at their job. Even high senior-level executives at AIR have senior-level coaches, so that they can be better and be the very best at the jobs that they fulfill. So we have found tremendous amount of success when folks have a coach and are able to benefit and receive that coaching. It's also, it's a neutral person that comes in with a fresh pair of eyes too, as well. Same thing for instructional coaching, again, building the capacity of the teachers and the support staff at the school to be able to implement new practices and to have support while they're learning how to do new things. It's really important to be able to have that, that support. Again, we've learned from doing this work in multiple schools across multiple years that the shoulder-to-shoulder piece is the most critical part in getting adults to learn how to adopt a new practice. So that's working right there beside them. Ted is one of the best at doing this too, as well. So he works shoulder-to-shoulder with teachers, he models lessons for teachers, he co-plans, he co-teaches, he demonstrates, with the whole goal, working towards the teacher being able to do all of these things independently by him or herself. But in the very beginning, if someone is learning how to do something new, it's really helpful to have that coach there right beside you that says, yes, you've got it, or you've got this part, let's just work on this part a little bit here. So the extra support has been of tremendous value to teachers, and we've always heard back from teachers that they really, really benefited from the coaching. And Ted will talk a little bit more about that. So Ted and Doug Fireside provide ELA and math coaching, shoulder-to-shoulder, also provide professional development targeted specifically to meeting the teachers' needs at Washington Middle School, and then have virtual support in between, so phone calls, emails, or Skyping with teachers in between visits as well. And then, because we are a large research organization and we have lots of resources, Ted and Doug have tons of resources at their fingertips that they can share with teachers in between visits too, as well.
Great. Now, I mentioned just a couple of things. One of the bullets on this particular slide talks about the October for professional learning. We did a session in math focus, a session with literacy focus as we went along. But really, the key is that we've done professional development for years. But one of the things about coaching is that if you do professional development and then follow up on that professional, well, development with coaching, that's where you get real gains, because the teacher can try it, someone can watch, someone can talk with about it, or a teacher can say, well, I'd really like to see what it looks like, and then we can let them know what it looks like. So the key is that it's not just professional development, oh, it's really exciting, but three days later, it's gone, we follow up. And the important thing is that this is in partnership with the school, in that we're focused on the school goals and building off the work that's done by the administration team as we go along, so that we're talking about the walkthrough behavior and helping teachers get better than those, rather than bringing in Ted's idea about what good math teaching looks like. We're all working on that. So that we're talking about the walkthrough behavior and helping teachers get better than those, rather than bringing in Tad's idea about what good math teaching looks like. We're all working together. And the virtual support's been especially valuable in ELA. Lori Wagner, did I say it close? Wangren is the literacy coach at a Washington Middle School. And it's been really helpful in facilitating meetings where Doug can meet by Skype with the team. And so he's gotten a lot more horsepower because we're only here about once a month. And we really depend on the virtual time to keep in touch with teachers and to take questions and to look at plans for next steps. So that's a really important piece to mention as well.
Can you give us a couple of examples of, what are you coaching them to do? What, what, you mentioned, you mentioned new things. Well, what, give me some examples of, of what we're asking them to do differently.
Just a few kind of, a variety of examples. Right now, one of the things that starts at the beginning is the adding and subtracting positive numbers. And, and then going to negative numbers in, in grade seven. And that's a really difficult concept for a lot of, of kids. And there are lots of physical models that can be done with that. So the first visit I was here, I worked with the seventh grade team to talk about, here's some physical models for your kids who aren't rule followers. And you know, just change it to subtraction and flip, here's why it works. And we worked on that. So one way of coaching is talking about, here's a different model to do it. Another part of coaching would be, let's talk about how you're managing independent practice in your classroom. You know, how do you organize things? So for example, one thing we talked about as an idea was for complicated computations, give them the answer. Because the job, the job right now isn't to get the answer. The job is to learn how to do the computation. So instead of having everybody say to you, hey, is this right? Is this right? They know that. And they know that it's about learning and about learning the methods so they can do that. Or it can be working with teachers on different ways to present the proof of the Pythagorean theorem. And one of the things we're working on right now is, is formative assessment in the classroom, which is day-to-day assessment to determine tomorrow's lesson or maybe parts of today's lesson. Where do I go next? And so we're looking at, teachers right now are choosing a technique that they want to get better at. And we're working on that. And I'll work with them to, to plan what they're doing. I'll go into their classroom as an observer to see how it looks. And then I'm also there if they want to talk about, can I see you do it? So that's, that's what I do as a coach. Did I cover that pretty well for you?
And I also think it's important to point out, you, you pointed it out to a degree that it's about making sure that we're interfacing the instructional coaching that AIR can provide with the instructional coaching supports that we have in place already. So how can we, how can we take good practice from AIR and share it in those, those somewhat limited time opportunities? And make sure that that's something that's spread throughout our instructional coaches within Washington and consider how it can be spread throughout the district as well. So it's taking the best, the best feedback, the best input for our teachers and making sure that it's, it's replicated over time.
Christina?
Go ahead, you were next. Okay, so I just have a question about that. And it sounds like great work. I, I wonder though about your coaching, the shoulder to shoulder coaching. And then let's just say that person decides to leave the district. The teacher who's been coached decides to leave the district. So what are we doing as a district to retain the shoulder to shoulder coaching, the extra, you know, support that's being given to the teachers? Because as a board member, my job is to make sure that we have a return on investment in this process. And I'm wondering, is it being shared with the district so that we can actually retain what, what's happening and then we could apply it again?
Yes, and I would say that we try to, or no, we, we don't try. We do guarantee the return on investment by making sure that that is collected and shared with our teaching and learning department. And we have ongoing structures for communication there. And, and so that's one aspect. I think another return on investment is people stay when they feel successful. If, if I'm in a position where there's struggle and I'm not sure what to do next and, and I'm not necessarily getting that feedback, that can lead to feeling incredibly anxious about the work and frustrated about not meeting student needs. And I think that sometimes that's a time when, when educators make a choice to go to another building or go to another district or, or change profession. So when we, in our, in our strategic work around thriving workforce, we talk about each member of our district knowing not only what their job is, but having the tools and knowledge to be successful in that job. So this is tailoring to, to that need and giving very, very specific, high-quality feedback so that, that people can feel successful and also create a sense of, of wanting to stay and wanting to continue.
But if you, let's just say that, that doesn't work out for maybe some other reason and the teachers are gone or the principal is gone. Do we have some of this documented in the bank so that we have it to access it when we need it?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you talked about partnership a couple of slides ago. I'm interested in how you have connected with our diverse community in meaningful and ongoing ways to form leadership opportunities. I, I think my concern with this type of partnership with AIR, and this is not a personal concern, it's a, it's a systems concern, is that it feels very top-down, expert-oriented, expert-driven. Research is great, but our kids have a whole string of needs that they bring in with them every single day. And it is critical that we engage our community. We have experts in this community who know our kids and know our communities. And so I'm, I'm curious how you have engaged them as part of the process, as an ongoing part of the process? And how that is part of the plan moving forward?
So that's, that's part of my work. And the shoulder to shoulder coaching that I'm doing with Donna is connected to engagement in the community. And I would love for that to be our topic when I come back in two weeks, that we focus in on my leadership goals and the things that are happening specifically to grow leadership practices at Washington. And then how that falls in and fits in with what's happening in the community.
So is that not part of what AIR is, is supporting? How, how does that, how does that work divide then, Cindy? Can you?
I think it absolutely does because, I don't have it up here with me. It's next to my bag. The, the assessment tool that I did, the goals are connected. And Catherine, I know you're going to know it better than I do. And you might be able to speak better to that part of it. But my focus is on those high-leverage practices as a school leader that can then build that support around Washington within the community. Because there, we're not going to have AIR supporting us forever. We need to figure some of this out so that we can sustain it on our own in moving forward, once we get those foundational pieces in place.
So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about this. The turnaround leader competencies are broken into four cluster areas. Again, this is research that's not just come from the school education space. The competencies actually came from the business world. And then two researchers, Emily and Brian Hassel, researched it in the education space and identified these four cluster areas. And one is driving for results, which I think is pretty self-explanatory, that's setting targets, very, conducting classroom observations, collecting data, monitoring your progress. Are we going where we said we were going to go? Are we implementing the things that we said we were going to implement? How do we know that? That's that whole continuous improvement piece. The second area is around distributing the leadership and teacher leadership and developing teacher leaders in the building and distributing the leadership across the shoulders of many. This is one of the areas that Cindy's working on too as well. The third area is around personal effectiveness and relationships. And this brings in the community piece to it, the different community partnerships that, that can support the school, including in parents and then in other organizations too as well. And then the last one is around problem solving, analytical thinking. Again, school improvement is a very complex, complicated process. Cindy, I probably, I can't imagine how many problems Cindy solves in one day. As a former turnaround principal, I, I remember thinking by nine o'clock, I'd solve probably like a thousand problems from buses coming in on time. And do we have breakfast ready? And do I have the kids in the classroom ready? And do I have enough of this and that for the day? So when Cindy took the self-assessment, she assessed herself on these four cluster areas and identified a coaching goal, which includes this addressing the community piece and, and communication and involving others in the school. So that'll be the update that you'll receive in, in November along with updates on the teacher leadership piece too as well. So it is a part of it. For us, it comes through in the coaching of the principal and developing those leadership competencies.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to note that we are keeping a constant open ear and looking for various methods of making sure that we're listening to and reaching out to diverse community members. When we did the, the, before we started the co-interpretation process, we wanted to make sure that we were inviting a broad group of people to give their input so it wasn't just a more homogeneous group of, of teachers and administrators giving input. We didn't have as much success during those focus groups as we had hoped despite some explicit invitation. So we then took another step and reached out through our family liaisons to provide interpretation and interviews so that we were gaining input from, from that perspective as well. It's not just important though that we do that in that first step. It's something that needs to be done on an ongoing basis and something that Cindy is working into her work and plans. Because we can't have better relationships unless we have relationships with the community and unless we change our culturally responsive practices in serving all students.
John, can I add one thing?
Sure.
I think to go beyond what you just said, because I think it's on point, is we need to engage community as leaders. It's not just listening to them.
Yes.
It's people don't want to have things done to them. They want to be a part of the process. And it makes me uncomfortable, and perhaps I shouldn't say this, to be sitting around a table where, where we are not representing the dynamics of Washington in what it looks like and who is there. And so already we are a group of people who are making decisions about a school. And I just think it needs to be at the top of everything we do because it, it has to go beyond that. That is how we lift up communities. And you know that, but I'm just, I just want to make sure I go on the record to say that.
I agree fully. We tried to do so through our, our student, student learning advocates, through outreach to community. We need to make sure that there's a broad array of connections with diverse community groups. And again, not, not only from a listening approach or a support approach, but an approach of how can we have them help us take leadership? How can we have the leadership around those, those diverse voices?
Andrew, then Roger.
Okay, so, excuse me. I'm, I'm still trying to understand more about what, what we're actually, what's actually happening here. I don't doubt the professional competency. I, I researched pretty thoroughly before voting for a significant investment like this. But I'm just, I'm just sitting here feeling like what's, what I've, I've heard so far is a lot of theory and a reference, yes, a reference to some manipulatives for, for math instruction and positives negatives. And, and a, a leadership styles assessment that was taken. So we might have gotten a new, you might have introduced, you know, might have learned something new about some good manipulatives, which is important. You're, you may have, you may have the best leadership style inventory that would be superior to what others offer. But I'm sitting here half an hour in, kind of not understanding much else of what actually is, is happening. Like what other things that we're doing. I'm sure we're doing it. I just don't know what they are.
I think we need to get into the report.
And John, Meg has invited questions, so it's on.
And I, I, as soon as I said, do you have questions? I was, because part of our, part of our thought was, and I'll be-
If Roger has a question.
I do.
Sure.
Let's ask it. Thank you.
Part of, if I could follow up on, on Andrew for just a second. Part of our concern was that we did want to move through the first part relatively quickly because it is about the context, it is about the theory. And the meat of what we're doing is in the second half of the report. And we knew that if we spent too much time in context and theory, it would feel like an attempt at a sales job rather than a report on how we're doing. And so that's really, you're correct, Andrew.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that on hold.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I know what I'm thinking, but I'm not sure to how, how to ask this, but I'm just going to try. So to Christina's point about, we're all sitting here and, you know, it's a pretty white-looking room. We know that's not the reality of what is happening or what, what the school looks like. Have you, you made, you mentioned student learning advocates. Have we, and are they part of this process? Are they part of this turnaround? I mean, I would imagine, I've been in the school, I've walked the hallways with them. And I've wondered at times, to me, they know probably more than almost anyone because they're, they're receiving students when they're in their, sometimes their crisis mode, what's going on in their, in their minds and maybe their hurdles to, you know, significant improvement of their own learning, lives, what have you. Are they included in this turnaround? Are they part of this? Are they part of the conversation? I hope the answer is yes. That's what I'm thinking about as I'm listening to this. Knowing that what's at the table doesn't really represent what's, what's in the school. But we do have people on, I guess, the ground that have access to these students on a regular basis. And I'm wondering if they are part of this, this process.
So what we're going to, what you're going to hear for the rest of this evening is a lot of talk about our instructional practices, our assessment, and then our relationships. So yes, they're involved. However, the work that AIR does doesn't necessarily get at every piece of the work that needs to be done at Washington. So their focus is on instructional practice, research-based, that big, big theory of how to turn a school around. But there's other work that we need to do that doesn't fit under the AIR umbrella. And we are well aware that there is definite work that we need to do that doesn't fit under the AIR umbrella.
So is that no?
No, that's not no. Yes, they are involved in this. They're not involved in helping us figure out what our goal is for literacy or math. However, they are involved in helping us make sure that we're building solid relationships with students and really knowing our families and helping us connect to our families when that gap exists because of the racial differences that we have. So-
So you're going to explore, you said that more in two weeks when you come back?
Yeah, well, and this is more like, the work that AIR does is around classroom instructional practices. The work that the student learning advocates do and our monitors who are invaluable in our school and are invaluable in helping us make sure that the needs that come into the classroom but are different than instructional practices are being taken care of.
When I think of the work that was done by the Student Services Team that also involved some student learning advocates and others from Washington, there was, there was a group that went, it was a black male leadership group that went to the University of Wisconsin, Green Bay for, for an all-day summit, as well as a female group-
You put that on?
That was put on-
The district put that on.
By the district. And if you want, if you could, if you could elaborate just a moment about that, if you'd like to, but, but it's, it's-
Yeah, I just, if, if, if I could add, we had a conversation on Friday about including the student learning advocates as a critical part of the administrative conversation. I think it's very important, I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying, is that every voice matters. We have leaders who lead in different ways. And so I think it was Jamie and Cindy and I standing there. I know it was Jamie.
Gindy.
Or Gindy, I'm sorry. So we had that conversation actually last Friday. Because we have that opportunity to bring in different lenses. And obviously, those conversations can be very eye-opening. And it's, it's, as, as we start to increase the number of student, or leaders and teachers and staff who reflect our students, we may not have everyone in place yet. But again, to be able to bring that conversation to the table, include- to be able to bring that conversation to the table, include our student learning advocates as part of a portion of an administrative team and meeting is very essential, in my opinion, and I shared that and we talked about how that could work and more to come on that as well.
One of the SLAs was involved in the co-interpretation over the summer.
Yes, that as well.
And I don't know if I missed this, Michelle, but it would have been helpful or maybe it would be helpful moving forward to have some sort of side-by-side of these are the priorities that AIR is bringing to this project, these are the things that they're leading on and as, Olson?
Cindy's just fine.
Cindy, okay. Those other pieces that maybe they're not leading but are supportive or like, sort of like another tier of the work? I, cause I just, I didn't understand, or I'm, I'm not understanding.
We're, we're work in progress as well and that's what continues-
That would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I think as well, when we get onto our next slide, is define our metrics for success and when we're asking for input, that, that will also help articulate what are the areas under which are focused under the AIR sphere of influence and what are, what are aspects that are additional work that we're doing at Washington.
And the Jeannie that Michelle-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
-was Jeannie Wall who's-
Our assistant principal.
...主管 at Washington.
And I apologize.
The key component of the, of the work and if you remember that implementation pathway and that part that was in the middle, the continuous improvement piece in all of our work is the progress monitoring. Again, collecting the data, wanting to make sure that we're making progress on the goals that have been established both for the school and for the AIR team. So we have monthly meetings with the district team, we have several instruments that we use to collect data throughout the year. We'll do another reality check in January where we'll do a deep dive into the implementation initiatives at the school, look at all the data that we have, look at where we're making progress, look at where we may not make, have made as much progress as we had intended and then develop a course correction action plan that takes the school to the end of the, to the year. Providing the monthly monitoring reports that Cindy will talk about here in just a minute and then at the end of the year, we'll do another review and planning meeting that queues up the summer and going into another school year.
So now we're about to move into the September report and the highlights and what we've done related to those highlights and I want to share the report with you. And again, because this is the first report, we wanted to do it within context, but we also have to remember that it takes a week or so after the month closes for AIR to complete a report, share it with us, for us to fine tune it. There is a little bit of a delay in having it here now, but that was partly because we wanted to make sure the structure of the report was based on what we had gathered from the board and others that would be something that would be beneficial. So we want to share this with you and also know that we would have our October report in the upcoming November 19th session. So Cindy, if you wouldn't mind sharing some of the highlights?
Sure, so through our coaching conversations, it was determined that we needed to focus on defining our measures of success a little bit more specifically. Our measures needed to be woven into our school success plan. So we met with Green Bay Area Public School District Office folks to determine where's going to be the best way to find our data that we needed and then what would that data look like that we would be gathering to help us move on the goals that we had.
He'll come back.
So basically, we listened to what the report said about and recommended in September and then we, we acted upon those recommendations in October. So, as I bring this back up. So our September recommendations become our October actions.
So last month, we worked to solidify our measures of success. We've established the targets which we're going to talk about in the future slides and our goals focus in those three areas of instruction, assessment and relationships. Our first measure of success is that by the end of this school year, forty-two percent of our Washington Middle School students will score basic or above on the Math Wisconsin Forward exam and again, that's a lagging indicator and it's an increase of twelve percent. So it's a one-year goal. This is not what we aspire to. We're currently thirty percent of our students are basic or above and that is on the assessment. So I think an important piece of, when we prepare for the Wisconsin Forward is helping students understand the why behind their taking this, why are you taking this assessment? Why do we need you to do well in this assessment? Why is this information important to us? All those are important pieces of making sure that that's communicated with students. So through focus, through our focus building wide, work on instructional practice interventions completed in math and then the use of common assessments, we'll be able to focus our instructional strategies and practices that help to improve our student learning.
So I think it's important to recognize as well that this represents a trajectory change, although there, there is positive growth that is expected in the first year, but we have to remember too that when the scores were in decline, it's, it's, there's work involved in, in turning that process so that it's becoming a positive and the positives we're seeing, we will see growth this year. There will be significantly accelerated growth in the second year as well. So we will be seeing progress, we will be seeing significant growth. The structures that are needed to be developed and put in place throughout the year as well as the, the, the input that we're getting from our leadership and instructional coaches, that will change the way we work with, with students and the way we work with teachers and we will have results, we will have payoff and that, that growth will accelerate significantly further in the second year as well.
So then next, go ahead.
I'm jumping way ahead here and I realize, John, that one of the things that as far as next steps is to talk about how we're going to share all this publicly. Suggestion I have regarding measures of success here, when we talk about basic or above, perhaps some definitions in there. I mean, we're talking about four levels.
Sure.
You know, maybe just a little bit of an explanation about that so clarity around just what, what those levels are.
I appreciate that.
What that means.
So on the, on the English language arts, English language arts portion, that's a good tongue twister right there, of the Wisconsin Forward, it's important to understand that this is not only the work of our English language arts teachers. Literacy happens in all content areas, including math and it's, it really is all of our content areas that need to participate in, in, in helping students become literate in their content area. So when we had our professional learning in October, all non-math teachers participated in professional development under the umbrella of literacy and it's really about creating content literate students. So you can be literate in band, you can be literate in art, you can be literate in literacy. So helping students and helping teachers understand solid, research-based teaching strategies to help students become literate in their content area. So in order for us to make this progress on this goal, the focus needs to be on all teachers working to improve their strategies in the classroom to help move that literacy goal. It can't fall on the shoulders of just those content area teachers.
Also, the, the examined instructional strategy changes will not just be related to literacy and math, we're looking at things like how do you close a lesson? How clear is your objective? What type of gradual release are you using? Because we want to make sure that it's, as Cindy said, a very inclusive goal focused on math and literacy, but then also focusing on what are the key core instructional changes that we can have in all teachers to be as engaging as possible.
Rhonda, when is this happening? When you talk about teachers having all of this information and coaching, when is this, throughout the school day, when is it happening?
It's a couple of different times. So on our early release days, that afternoon is doing professional learning and we were fortunate to have Ted and Doug onsite for our early, our September, September nineteenth Professional Development Day. So they led the professional learning for our math teachers and then our non-math teachers. And then each department or grade level has a CLT, a collaborative learning team. So they meet at minimum on a weekly basis, but I know that they meet every day and we're working on focusing in really on what the conversation is around during those CLT times, that we're focusing in on data and instruction, data, using data to make decisions of what you're doing in the classroom and then strong instructional practices. Each department has a department chair that participates as a member of our building leadership team. So then we work and talk about those high leverage instructional strategies and they actually help define what those look fours are in the classroom. So when we talk about closure, gradual release of responsibility or independent practice, our building leadership team help define what those look fours are for us as we come in to do the walkthroughs.
And does this go into their prep time at all?
No. No, it's part of, it's part of their professional responsibility. Is one of their, one of your, and someone's going to be able to speak to this better than I can, but CLT time is, is an expectation. So then we go into our climate culture perception survey and that's the survey that families take, staff takes and students take at the end of the school year and, actually twice in the year, I think they take it in the fall and then again in the spring. And these focus area are determined based on our scores. So one of the questions is the school's academic expectations are too high, just right or too low. And when you looked at Washington's data, this is the staff survey, thirty-three out of fifty-five said that it was too low. So our goal is to increase that, that we're going to increase our expectations for students and increase the number of teachers that are saying that our expectations are just right for students versus that we're not setting the bar high enough. Another area is that discipline is being handled on a consistent manner. Our goal is to decrease the eighty-four percent of disagree or strongly disagree to fifteen percent disagree or strongly disagree with eighty-five percent agreeing that we are handling discipline on a consistent manner. I think a part of that is defining what consistent is. For different people, it means different things, so I think we need to define what consistent means. And then our last growth area for our perceptual survey is that the school or department operates as a team. We're just a little bit below half that disagree or strongly disagree. We're going to work on increasing that so that eighty-five percent of our staff really believe that the work that they're doing is because they operate as a department or a team.
I have a question about that. I've had parents reach out to me about there's no homework apparently given at the school and they have questions about that and their concern is that obviously they go on to high school where there's homework. The practice of no homework, what is that?
I don't know if it's a school, I would have to like look into a little bit more. If every teacher doesn't give homework, I, homework, I don't know that that's true. There's not a lot of research behind homework having any helpful gains to, for students, especially students that struggle, because what we're doing is we're sending students home with work to do who struggle to themselves sometimes at home or if my daughters are coming home with their math when they were in second grade, I would look at them and tell them my way of solving the problem, but it's not the way that their teacher wants them to solve the problem. So if we're going to send students home with homework, we have to educate families on what we want that completion of homework to look like. So there's not a lot of research that says homework does anything to improve student learning.
Okay, but my daughter goes to a school where she has homework three times a week, so I, is that a district thing or?
Well, as, as we pointed out with our, our work with AIR, we have to look at what are some, what are, what are different strategies that we can use particularly to Washington? There are times that the work done at, at Washington may need to deviate from, from what our standard or of practice might be for another school within the district, but I do think that there's a lot to be said for what Cindy is pointing out around the independent practice that students participate in needs to be structured, particularly for students who are far behind and at risk. And if we simply send students home with a pile of homework that they don't have the competency to do on their own and we don't give them the guidance and then we base a lot of what their grades are on and their sense of, of sense of purpose or passing or not, not passing is based on whether or not they complete that independent practice, it, it can be a struggle for, for those students. So we have to find ways of making sure that the students do have independent practice. Independent practice is the critical part of homework, but how can we make sure that it's happening in a meaningful, supported, scaffolded way within the classroom?
And I, and I hear that, I'm just concerned about, because obviously then they go on to another school where there's, there's significant homework, how, how that transition works. I think that could be a liability for some kids.
That's true.
Yeah.
It is something that we, we look at and it is something as well that we, we look at between elementary and high school, that it needs to be a transition so we're gradually gearing the students up so that they're ready for that homework, that there may be less homework at sixth grade and seventh grade as, as they, they build and then as they proceed into high school and proceed into the higher grades, there's, there's more homework. But I do think that that piece around academic expectations is critical. We can't, I think sometimes as people who want to help students, we sometimes end up lowering the bar just a little bit because we want kids to be successful, we want to give you a chance and hit that zone of proximal development. But if we continue to lower the bar again and again over time with maybe a good intention, we end up with some of what we saw through the co-interpretation and I believe that we have very positive teachers at Washington, but we saw that students were sometimes engaged in activity, but the activity in which they were engaged was really quite low from a, from an instructional intellectual load. So they might have been doing an activity that, that they were working on something, but the payoff as far as what the, the instruction, the instructional payoff related to that work, it wasn't as clear in some of the observations we found. And again, that's not to say that it wasn't done with good intention and that there aren't very hard, hard-working teachers at Washington, but we have to figure out ways of making the work challenging yet accessible for the students.
And I think that's where the instructional coach comes in because you do have at that school caring teachers who are working hard and, but their experience in school, it's very different from their experience as teachers in the school. And so that's where instead, you'd be saying, you know, all kids can learn, but all kids don't learn the same way. And that's why we're having someone coming in and saying, try this method, that sort of thing. The goal is not to change what teachers are doing if it's working, the goal is to support change in research, what, research-based ways that have happened with success in other places for them to try there, to try to raise the bar without just saying, we're just going to raise it. If you're going to have higher expectations, there need to be higher supports. And that's what the education, that's what the instructional coaching is about.
I just have a quick question, Michelle, this is for you. The climate and culture perception survey that was the link on here, was that parents and teachers?
To me, can you clarify, it looked like the school perception survey.
The data was from the staff's side of it.
Okay, but who else, but there was other data, right?
Yes, but not used-
But not in this?
Not in this.
This looked like school perception questions from the school perception survey that we've given for several years now.
Okay.
Based on what I was reading in the questions in terms of asking educators if they, where they find the level of rigor in student learning.
So the staff, the staff data was pulled in-
Correct.
-for your action planning?
Correct.
Was the parent piece pulled in, like, or how, was that data used in any sort of-
Our N was too small?
Yeah, that was going to be my next question.
Yeah, our N was too small, so we have to do a better job getting more parents to provide input on what we can do to improve.
Okay, and I have one follow-up question, sorry.
That's okay.
Do you, where do the students pull, where are you, are you serving? Do you, where do the students pull, where are you, are you serving them? How is their voice being pulled into this as well?
Yep. So we looked at some of their perception data, which we'll get to in a little bit. And then we're doing a couple of different surveys that we'll talk about in a couple more slides.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure when I was looking at this, I knew what you were talking about.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Full disclosure, my bias is strongly around humanistic theory, Maslow's hierarchy. And I think culture trumps everything. So lay that out there. What do you see the implications being of the culture issues that are documented in this survey? And the likelihood of success with building capacity with the higher order concepts that you're trying to achieve through coaching?
One of the expressions I really like in mathematics is an existence proof. And the idea of within existence proof is you're showing that something is possible. And when teachers see that something is possible, then they'll work to replicate it. Because that's what they're all about. They're there to make, help kids get successful. And that's what they're looking for. So the idea is that if we have, you know, when we have good activities and good things happening and kids start saying, I see this, as they get a chance to do this, then it changes the culture in the room. And this doesn't happen overnight. It happens kid by kid. As students start to realize they have agency and they understand, they see that engagement will increase their learning and they start to think about themselves as learners.
And I realize that, you know, there's, there's air and there's the Green Bay schools. But, you know, I share Christina's concern with what she was speaking of earlier. Some of the unmet needs that the kids have that are being, well, the behaviors, the, you know, the disengagement that are, really don't have a lot to do with the lessons going on. But these are things that have to be addressed before the kids are going to be engaged by the lessons. So I just put that out there. You know, the, the data, eighty-four percent disagreeing about discipline being handled in a consistent manner. Just under one half not operating as a team, academic expectations being too, expectations being too low. At least in my mind, those things have to be addressed first before you can get at how we're going to change our lessons to engage kids. So, so any disagree?
Agree. I do agree. I think that if you look at the scores there, it, it talks about the amount of work that is needed. It talks about the lift that will have to take place and that there won't be an immediate turnaround. I wouldn't expect that in November or December, we will see, everything has completely changed at Washington. Because if half the people at the end of the year felt like they weren't a team, that's, that's going to require significantly different work. And, and I think we talked a little bit last week. We have to make sure that the chaos that sometimes happens when there are, when there's an overabundance of discipline issues and when there's, there aren't the structures in place, those, those elements are foundational to making sure that our administration has time to get in the classroom and that the instructors, when they're, the teachers when they're teaching have an opportunity to teach good lessons. So the work we're doing, it's, it's not just about the instructional changes that need to take place. There are also aspects of support that Judy and Cindy are working on related to supports from the state RTI center and work around our positive behavior interventions and supports with the behavioral team. If we don't address those pieces, then, you know, if Cindy can't get into a classroom because, because she has ten kids waiting in the office, there, there isn't going to be that ability to give that feedback. So it's important to work on both, and it's important to have metrics around both. And I think you'll see some positives as far as some of the data we're seeing, as well as some of the next steps. Judy?
So I'll also add just that even though tonight we're listening to the AIR report and it's a lot on instructional coaching and leadership coaching, the comment earlier about coming back in two weeks and really showing what AIR's focus is, as well then as Washington Middle School and the other initiatives. Because I know in my work with Cindy, there's a lot of work going on regarding climate and culture, as well as how are we really authentically engaging different members of our community, whether it's the African-American community, Latino community, our Somali parents. And I know Cindy has a number of good things that she's putting in place. So it'll be a great opportunity for us to come back in two weeks and really highlight those sections as well.
I think, I think that's critically important. I think most, I shouldn't say most, but I, a lot of the folks who I've talked to about this continuing issue are more concerned with the climate culture aspects. Not that they don't care about this, you know, the academics, and I certainly do and understand what we're, what we're at here. But those are the things that seem to be most on people's minds, at least the folks that I've been talking to.
Christine, I just wanted to add one other thing as well. Cindy, when you come back, I would love, can you go back to the discipline? The last, no, it was the chart that you had.
Sure.
I'm sorry, that's okay. Where it says like, things like student discipline will be handled consistently. Which, just when you come back, I would love to be able to have some language, some shared language on what those types of things mean to you. Because discipline can be handled consistently and it can be terrible.
Right.
Right?
If we suspend every kid.
But I do, I think these are the things that our community needs to understand, that we are using a consistent message. We have a shared vision. We are committed to a positive climate and what that looks like. So it's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, I guess I have to agree with what, what Ed is saying here. The, we, if we didn't have the level of student behavior concerns and disengagement that we had, I, I think we have, I don't know that we would have needed to look for an extra, invest in an extra hand on this because we have, we have academic experts in our organization. What's new, I think, is the culture and climate piece. And I would, I would say, having studied the school perception survey, I don't know that there really is a place to say on that survey that student discipline isn't good here except in that question, which is consistent manner. There isn't, there isn't a question on there, student, you know, behavior expectations are, you know, too strict, too soft. That's really the only place you can say that you have a problem with student behavior. And eighty-four point four percent are, are still saying that. So that, I think that's where I would say two.
That's last year's data. That's, that's from the spring.
All right.
Of last year.
Okay.
That's our base, that's what we're using as a baseline as we move, before I, so that's in, what do you, when do you take it, in May? April of twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen.
But when we, yeah, when we give it again.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
We're still only going to have one place outside of comments. Because that survey, and my point is that survey has really one question for you to weigh in on the student discipline. And it's that question. There, so it, when, it's not like there's a separate one for inconsistency. I think if, when you rate low there, that's where you're signaling in that survey that you're concerned about student behavior. And, yeah, again, I guess my point being similar to what Ed was saying. I think that my vote to bring the extra hand in here was for the turnaround on, with what's gone wrong with student behavior and culture issues, more so than academics. Though we'll certainly take.
Sure.
Input about academic practices as well.
If I can, if I can put out an idea that is probably not the most popular. We had, when, we did have another group work with us several years ago when WestEd came in and looked at what, they did an analysis to look at what was the problem. And we did have a school success team that we put together to go in and look at what was the problem. And now we've had AIR come in and go deep and look at what is the problem. And all three times, we had a really similar answer. And it's a harder, it's a harder answer. It's a harder definition of what that barrier is across the road than we'd like to see. The easier answer would be we need a tougher sheriff in a principal, or we need a kinder sheriff in a principal, or we need a more consistent sheriff and posse with the principal. Those are important. Those are critical. But what we found with the WestEd piece, and what we found through our school success team, and what we're finding again through the AIR work, is that a lot of the behavioral issues, and again, this is not popular, relate to being as engaging as, as, as we need it to be. And so that work around changing the instructional practice, it is the upstream work. The downstream work of making sure the behavior once a kid is in the office, in the hallway, that, that is important too. We can't have that done in a shoddy manner, in a manner that is overly punitive or in a manner that isn't going to change behavior. Those structures need to be in place. You have to like tame the Wild West, I was saying, before you can get to that, that higher level work to an extent. But if we never get to that upstream work, if we never get to changing the, the engagement level of our students, we will continue to have the, the symptom, which is the behavior.
Michelle?
As, as we've reviewed some of the data, and this was just as of late, we have students who do extremely well in some classrooms during the school day and not so swell in behavior in others. And so it's really trying to find out what that bar, that roadblock is to that child's learning. Sometimes it may be a situation where the child knows that they don't have what's going on in the classroom and it's not relatable because they don't have the skills, because maybe they've been behind and it's overwhelming and they just figure, I just can't do this, so I'm, I'm just getting out of here. And their behavior may accelerate. Sometimes it's feeling not welcome in the classroom. So it's really looking at, because if you have a child, and that's why these teams are so important, collaborative teams, because you share the data. You look at the data together. Well, how come Michelle is doing really well in your class? Well, Michelle loves your class. Why is that? You know, because we have children who are very inconsistent in where they perform. And there's reasons for that. And so that's part of that culture shift as well. Is that, you know, if, having been a teacher and, and, you know, kids know when you don't believe. You know, if you believe in every child who walks through your door and you greet them by name and you stand at your doorway, they feel like they're part of the team and they'll go through the wall for you. They will. And that's what I have seen. And, and sometimes, and, and that's part of that social emotional piece too, because you start to then really understand what that child's needs are and be able to address what Mr. Dorf was talking about. But at the same time, helping that child get what they need so that they can find the success. And so it's that fine balance and it's, it's heavy lifting. And it's really sometimes just a growth mindset about believing what, what, what children can do. And also it goes back to what you were talking about, that sense of efficacy. If I know and I can see that I can do this, then I'm, so it's balancing those pieces is what my experience has been. And it's not for lack of desire. It's trying to figure all those pieces out because sometimes a child can't articulate what's going on and how they feel, if that makes.
I've had the conversation with Donna about, you know, we have all this work to do with climate and culture and all this work to do with instructional practice. How do we do it all? And, and they would say, correct me if I'm wrong, but you do both at the same time. And you can't pick one over the other. You have to do both at the same time. And so we have a lot of work to do.
In every situation where I was a turnaround principal, in every situation where we have coached principals that are going through an intensive school improvement process, we always come to this place. And student discipline is probably the number one indicator of a school that has been chronically low performing. And the discipline and the culture is usually indicative of the academic low expectations. And so even though you may not say to me, you have low academic expectations to me, the way that we teach our students, the way the lessons are designed, the thought that's put into those lessons, the practices that are used in those lessons, send a message to the student that I have low expectations of you. And therefore, this is what you get back in return is students, it's a self-fulfilling belief. And when we raise the bar on teachers, providing professional development, providing coaching, building their efficacy, breaking the cycle of failure in their mind. Either the students can't learn, or these students were only capable of learning but so much. When, when that starts to change and tip, then the students start to believe in their own selves. And then you start to see things really start to quickly accelerate. You'll see student achievement will accelerate. You're going to see a decrease in discipline referrals because students are engaged in the classroom. They feel like the teacher really understands them and is able to meet their individual learning needs. And then you're going to see that sense of teamness is really important too in, in the culture and climate piece. When teachers are working together, students feel that these teachers are working together. And they in turn really feel that investment in their learning. We, we've experienced this everywhere we've been, that, that discipline piece, the instructional piece. And as Cindy said, they both have to rise together. These students need to learn. That's why they go to school. It's, it's our responsibility to provide that quality education to them. And when we focus on the instructional side of it, then we're also able to go at the discipline side. But to focus on the discipline side and not address their academic needs is, I think, an injustice and an unfairness to them. So really working with the teachers to design lessons that keep kids engaged, that meet their needs where they are, is, is really been a proven best practice. And at the same time, implementing the strategies that you have going on, your PBIS, the RTI, those other pieces that wrap around and support that instructional programming. They need time to practice. They need time to learn. They need time to really hone these strategies to, to where they're all working together so that then you can see it from the outside. You can see what's happening. So I think one of the other things that happens in these school improvement processes is that we get impatient to want to see something happen really quickly. The school didn't get here overnight and it's, therefore it's going to take time for the adults in the building to learn how to do things in a different way. And then in turn, for the students to learn how to do things in a different way too as well. I would like to wake up tomorrow weighing a hundred and twenty-five pounds. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take time and effort on my part to work at a program that's going to get me where I want to go. And that's what Cindy's trying to do right now with the team of folks at her school. Both the support from the district and the support from AIR right now. It's going to take all of us working together to support those teachers and those students at that school. Give them time and space to practice and to learn. And then we go in, you can see we're very focused on monitoring and collecting data. And we ask ourselves this question every single day. Are we, are we going aimed, lined up to the targets that we set? Are we making progress? How do we know? If we're not making progress, what do we need to adjust for today? Cindy's very data-focused. She's getting her hands on the data. And she's very results-oriented. So I have a lot of faith in her. And she has a good support team all the way around her too. They, they need time to implement the strategies.
Thank you. Can you click, Rhonda?
I'm curious what you think. It says you've been to forty-plus districts across the country. What do you think about the school building, the itself, like the classrooms?
The physical environment?
The physical environment of the school.
Well, I've been in, I mean, one thing, it seems the building's in pretty good shape. I mean, I, you know, the, there are people keeping the building clean during the day, not just before and after. I've been in, in lots worth buildings.
Well, but when you say that, and I'm not even thinking about the cleanliness of the building. I'm thinking about the feeling of the building and the classrooms, just in general. You know, human beings, we are affected by our space, which is why people spend a lot of money decorating, redesigning their homes. We're asking kids to be in a building for a certain amount of time during the week. I'm just wondering what you think and if you believe that a physical structure actually affects students and their learning capacity.
Well, outside of my area of expertise, I will, all I can say is that when I go into the classrooms, they... the classrooms, they feel like pleasant places and I don't notice any deficits in what's happening. I mean, you know, you've got the, you've got the technology support for kids in place with the document cams and the projectors and the access to technology that teachers are using and we're working on using in slightly different ways to make it more effective. So those things are there. I haven't been in a room yet that particularly uncomfortable, but I understand that Green Bay gets a little colder later in the year. But as far as, you know, a dismal place, I, it does not feel like a dismal place as I come in and there's light and there's space.
But you're there once a month, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'm just, you asked for my opinion. That's what, that's what I'm noticing.
Are you aware that there are nine classrooms without windows?
I don't know that I've, let's see, I've been in one of the classrooms without windows I know of and they've got that nice glass door and I did not feel, actually, I've been in two of them. And in both cases, they're bright places and so I did not, you know, now that you mentioned it, yeah, they didn't have windows, but they're bright places and they didn't feel dark or unwelcoming at all.
I'm just thinking because there's conversation that a student does well in one class and then goes to another class and then doesn't maybe do as well. I also have a question about, school starts at 7:30?
7:35.
Okay, and what time is lunch?
Funny you should ask. Our first lunch is at 10:28. Our second lunch is at 11:24 and our third lunch is at 12:20. If I wouldn't have this with me, I wouldn't be able to answer that question.
Okay. Is there any, has there been any discussion or thought about the kids that maybe have lunch at, did you say 10:20?
Mm-hmm.
And then do they have an opportunity to eat again until the end of the day?
They don't have a school provided snack to them, but teachers let them eat.
Okay, but if they didn't bring something themselves, they don't necessarily have something.
Nope.
And I ask that question because at my daughter's school, lunch is at 10:20, 10:30 and I've never really quite understood how that's, by the time you hit one o'clock, you and I would not be able to do our work effectively after not eating for so many hours. I just wonder about, you know, these are, they seem like little things, but to me, they are, they're really big things.
So we have granola bars. We have, meaning the basic needs are. We have granola bars stationed in a couple of different places in the building. And so when kids, if they don't have their own snack, they know who to come to, to get them. And then some teachers do sell school approved snacks in their classrooms for a quarter. And I know that if a kid doesn't have a quarter, they're going to give them a snack.
I agree. I think in your presentations, Cindy, I think those are like really good, I always, my background is in health and wellness. And so things like, are the kids being physically active during the day? Do they have ability in their instructional practice to be moving around the classroom?
Absolutely.
Are they connecting kinesthetic learning to what they're doing? Are they having healthy snacks? How does the, we have a fabulous food service department here.
Absolutely.
How are they supporting? What do you need from them?
Mm-hmm.
Those would be those pieces that go back to what I think what Ed was saying about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. I call it the whole child. It's the same thing, right? Are they hungry?
And I worry about, you know, we're still, we're, students need to identify, I'm hungry, I need something. They still sometimes have to do that, they obviously have to do that themselves. If you're, if you're having lunch at 10:20 and you're not able to come to that conclusion that you need something to eat and it's 1:30, quarter to two, because for whatever reason, you can't make that, I just, I feel like it's such a basic thing, but I've asked my daughter, the worst class that she experiences with behaviors is at two o'clock.
They're hungry.
That's not an accident.
It would be interesting to talk to food service to see if, to explore what that was.
I think when we consider next steps, I think thinking about the whole child is a critical piece. When you talk about kinesthetic learning, if engagement is one of our issues, having more kinesthetic learning, making sure that you're well fed, those are, those are factors that will factor into wellness and also factor into engagement specifically.
Get some wisdom, right?
Thinking about our measures of success and what we have, also thinking about attendance is one of our next measures. And I know we have a question.
We do have a question.
But thinking about how food and wellness can affect attendance too is something.
John, I'm calling on Jamie. Just go ahead.
And since the topic of food, I know at the high school level, we have a meal provided to us at three o'clock at the end of the day. Does that translate to middle and elementary as well?
Do you guys have dinner, the dinner program?
That's very interesting. Now, I have known nothing about the dinner program.
So we, that is something, because you guys are C E P, I believe, at Washington Middle School?
I mean, yes.
Free for all?
Yes.
So that would be a good next step.
The dinner program.
You guys have a fabulous dinner program over there.
Yeah, a lot of kids utilize it.
Especially with like after school programs and such. Great idea, Jamie.
Jamie, what time is your school day in?
Three o'clock.
Looking good.
Yeah.
Love it.
Thank you.
All right, we are now on page 19 of your presentation. These are all great ideas. And I know you're going to come back in a couple of weeks with more information. But I feel obligated to allow you to finish your.
So kind of you. Thank you. So the next area is getting at some of those measures that don't necessarily fall under the air umbrella. And this would be us looking at improving attendance. So we took a cohort of our current seventh and eighth grade students. So our baseline is our seventh grade students and we took their data from when they were sixth graders. And we took our eighth grade students and took the data of when they were seventh graders. And so we want to improve their attendance. And then if you look at our baseline is that 25.7% of our seventh graders and 32.9% of our eighth graders have more than 15 days of absence. So really targeting in and focusing in on those students that are just short of that and seeing what we can do to help them avoid getting to that. The next area is to reduce disciplinary incidents. And so since the start of the school year, that's this year's data, 92.35% of our students have zero or one admin managed referral. And last year at the same time, that percentage was 85.23. So we've increased that percentage by seven percent in two months. And then last year, at this time, there were 159 incidents of suspension. And in the first two months this year, there were 66. Some other things that we're going to do to build on those measures of success are working on having students identify positive relations, positive relationships at Washington Middle School. So by the end of, I'm on slide 20 through 21. By the end of the, this school year, our students are going to participate in a reversed dots program or reversed dots survey. And the goal will be that they identify at least one adult at the school that they have a relationship with. On our fall school climate survey, 50 to 60% of the students last year reported that they felt respected by adults. So part of our school success plan goal, one of the goals, is to look at the concept of respect, talking about it both in what does it look like to students and what does it look like to adults? I've done this conversation before with groups of students and adults and really, quite honestly, the answer is the same for both. It looks like, sounds like and feels like the same for adults and students. But having that conversation really helps lay the foundation so that we're speaking the same language with our students. So current action steps toward improving our instructional practices. Our C L T conversations are connected to data and common assessments, raising star assessments to inform decisions about next steps in instruction. And then with our classroom walkthroughs, so we are definitely in classrooms more at Washington than I would say other schools in Green Bay and maybe in most places. So this is, these are two week cycles that we're doing. So in the first two weeks, our focus was on learning targets and closure. And we did 21 classroom walkthroughs with our admin team. That increased to 24 the next two week cycle. Gradual release of responsibility was our focus. In this last two weeks, we focused on checking for understanding and the Washington admin team did 53 walkthroughs.
That is.
It's huge.
It's very impressive.
So we, our next focus for the next two weeks is independent practice. So we then go back and share with staff what we were looking for, what we saw, and then we'll do that with the last two weeks when we focus on independent practice as well.
Cindy, do you come up with a specific rubric on these walkthroughs?
We're not using a rubric right now for the baseline data collection. We are, we're using the same tool and I can absolutely share that with you or bring that next time.
That would be great.
Yeah, so it's, it started with our focus on closure activities. So we start by looking at what the learning target is and then if there's an exit slip or some sort of closure activity that the teacher's doing. Building on that, we added gradual release of responsibility. So there's really a place to document that I do, we do, you do, concept of a lesson that's built around gradual release of responsibility. Then this last two weeks, we went in and we were focusing on checking for understanding. So what kinds of questions were the teachers using when they were looking at the instruction that they did? What were they asking students to do in the classroom to make sure that they understood not only what they were supposed to be doing, but the concept of the material that was presented? And then this next week, we'll be looking at independent practice. And our B L T actually determined the look fours, our building leadership team, determined the look fours for independent practice and checking for understanding. But yes, absolutely, I'll bring it. It's connected to Danielson as well. So we took the different areas and connected them back to the Danielson domains and components, which is the tool that we use to evaluate teachers. The next area focuses on our behavioral progress. So we have seen a reduction in suspensions so far this year. When you look at last year, by September and October, there were 712 major referrals. 712, that's a huge number. A major referral is, yes, a major referral, thank you, is defined as administrative, it's dealt with by an administrator. And then this year, we're at 252 during the same time period. Yes.
Andrew.
So, so there's two ways we can have a dramatic drop in those referrals. So I guess maybe there's actually, maybe there's actually three you could quit. Well, I mean, you could, if the behaviors, the negative behaviors could reduce greatly, meaning less referrals. Or teachers could refer fewer things to the office for the same, you could teacher manage incidents that used to be office managed, which often is a good thing, but sometimes, sometimes people take one for the team too much and, right? And then, or, or they're just hopefully not this one, but maybe not writing referrals because they tried that last year and it didn't work. So I would assume if, if we're talking about a 70% drop between September, October last year, September, October this year, I'm hoping that people would, in the building would say, who had been there both years, that they've seen a big, some noticeable change? Or are we just, or are you just processing it differently?
We haven't changed process. One thing that is different, work that was done last year towards the middle of the school year, the heat pride process was implemented at Washington Middle School where teachers established corrective classroom action steps. So each teacher has four steps within their classroom that they implement. Steps one and two are handled in the classroom and steps three and four are handled outside the classroom. Step three is handled and a student is returned to class. Step four is administrative managed. So what we're seeing is the capacity of teachers was built around handling lower level behaviors so that they could be dealt with in the classroom prior, rather than the student being sent out so that they lose that instructional time.
So there is a difference between how they were handled September, October last year and how they were handled September, October this year?
Correct.
So that does skew the data somewhat.
However, I think the thing that you see here, and it's in the summary up above, so it's increased positive interactions between staff and students and increased teacher capacity is the change for the numbers, I think. Our students are the same. We didn't get new students and we're not, not entering information in the computer. We're handling the behavior that happens. I do believe the capacity for the teachers, the capacity with the teachers to handle those behaviors is what's led to the change.
Can I ask what your protocol is for, for suspension? Do you as principal have to approve all suspensions or do the A Ps have authority to suspend without running it by you?
They don't have to run it by me. We do have an agreement that we always bounce the idea off another admin. So our team doesn't make those decisions in silos. We make those in collaboration.
John, is that the same as it was last year or is it different?
I think that there's a heightened sense of making sure that you have a thinking partner. Even, you know, many years as an administrator, I would sometimes bounce an idea off my assistant principal, even when I was principal or another principal, just to say, you know, this is what I'm thinking, how would you have handled it? And make sure that you're aligned. I think that there's no fault in doing that. I think we've seen other instances in which, when that's not done, sometimes there's poor decision making. So I think that it is, is something critical. Another kind of side note of something we've seen as far as a measure of this, when I would go into Washington last year and meet with Molly O'Neil, for instance, one of the assistant principals, I'd usually get there, you know, if it was an afternoon meeting, a little bit after three, and she'd just be sitting down to try and grab a bite of a sandwich that she meant to eat at noon. And being able to be at Washington and occasionally meet with administration and have a moment of uninterrupted time where you can, and I'm not saying that they're not working, but uninterrupted time where you can focus on something rather than triaging discipline all the time? That, and I realize that's a qualitative piece, there is more time that is been able to be focused on those instructional walks, things of that nature. It is a shift. Is it completely better? By no means. There's still a lot of work to be done. But I think that shift we did around mid-year last year when we looked at what, how does the state define what is administrator, administrator dealt with versus teacher dealt with? How does the nation define that? And then we started our work around, how can we, how can we draw that line back closer to where it should be? And how can we support teachers in giving them skills? There's been a lot of work done by your administration and your administrative team as well as people prior to you coming related to increasing teacher capacity to deal with those misbehaviors.
Are board members aware that the administrators at Washington are on rolling desks? They have rolling workstations and they're out?
In the hallway.
Out in the hallways.
Can we get a rolling desk in here for us?
Well, there you can.
Kinesthetic breaks for administration too.
They're available and they're, they're out there.
That's really.
So, so those are our measures of success. We've had a degree of input and we can take that into our consideration before we come back on the 19th. But if there are other suggestions for measures of success, we'd like to have those shared through the board. Also, we want to make sure that all the documents that we shared tonight will be publicly shared. That's important. Again, it wasn't meant to not be transparent or anything of that nature. It was meant to make sure that we were able to tell the story within context tonight and that as a work session, since this is the first time reporting, we wanted to make sure the way we report and the measures we are using match the needs of the board. So we will be incorporating board input on those measures of success to bring back on the 19th. And then we'll also be sharing our October report on the 19th as well that we will be getting as well as talking about what we've been doing in November to meet the recommendations of that, that work that was done in October.
Rhonda.
Would it be possible for the 19th that we would be able to have that information as well as the public has it? as well as the public has it before we have an open session meeting?
Sure. I think that would be well worth.
Like on the Friday prior to the?
Oh, I think, yeah, definitely.
In our wake-up.
Yep.
When you come back, can you share some of the needs that the teachers have for support outside of all of the things that they are required to do? What are some things that they can, that the board can do to support the districts? Teacher burnout is a significant concern. I want to make sure we're addressing that.
Can you give an example?
Do they want to, do you think we should have a staff appreciation day? Do they need, I, I don't, I would look to you to make those and for them to speak on their behalf, but, you know, they have a lot of heavy lifting to do. And it's important to rally around them and let them know we're there for them as well.
We'll bring you some examples of some of the things we've done.
Yeah.
And more, more ideas. Yep, absolutely.
Michelle.
I just, I just want to add, last week was conferences, teacher con, or two weeks ago, and Cindy's husband was there bringing in a huge turkey roaster of chili and homemade cornbread and a dessert item. So, I mean, I think that's, food is very important around culture and making people feel valued. So, I was, I was, I didn't eat any, but I sure thought it looked good.
It was fun. Also, our food staff service does a good job of catering, and they can come and do it all for you. So, I'm going to do a little plug for them here.
Yeah, let that salad look amazing.
They do a great job. I think, I think that's really important. And by asking for and pointing out some of the needed changes in adult practice, I want to reiterate and double down on, on the fact that it needs to be done with support in a caring way. That when we're expecting people to change the way we act, ourselves included, we have to do so with compassion and support and respect, and that's how we feel about all of our educators at Washington.
And I'd like to follow up on that real quickly, because it didn't fit anywhere else in, is that both Doug and I have been very, very pleased with the welcome that we've had, and also teachers' willingness to try things. Doug hasn't been back since the last visit, but he gets reports of literacy strategies being used. I'll suggest a method, and teachers tried the method. So, you've got a great staff there that's, that's willing to step out and give things a try, and if something doesn't work, they'll say, Ted, you know, that didn't work, and I say, do you do this? And they said, yeah. And I said, well, let's try something else then. But, but there really is a willingness to try, and I really wanted to recognize that. And I didn't find any other place to put it in, so I'll put it in here.
Our teachers are amazing. They are.
They are.
Rhonda.
Before we had actually taken the proposal and voted on it, we had asked for testimonials from other communities who had used AIR as their turnaround partner. And almost every testimonial that was given to us showed about a three, three, four-year time span before you actually saw a change. Is that what you expect at Washington? That we are going to invest about three to four years before we see a change, as stated in the other testimonials that we had, have been able to look at?
Well, go ahead.
Well, you know, I, so, it all depends. That's probably not the answer you want to hear, right? It depends on the capacity, the resources, the will and the commitment of the people that are actually doing the work. Our, our role, and we see ourselves as the capacity builders, system builders. So, it's like any program that you would, you know, participate in, you, you work as hard as you work at it, you get the outcomes that, as much effort as you put into it. What we've seen and what we've experienced with our other turnaround support efforts is a gradual decrease of support needed by us. So, in the first year, typically, it's, it's intensive. You'll, you'll see us a lot, and, and we'll be in communication a lot, and there'll be a lot of activities that will be going on. Year two, usually you see a dial-down of support needed for the teachers or for the principal. Now, and this support may look different, dependent upon where we are. How, how well, and, did the foundational pieces, those structures and processes get put into the first year? And are they coming back and being operational at a really high level in the second year? And then in the third year, usually, it's a, typically a very light touch, because all of those pieces are at play. And we, it's like checking in like once a month or so, that we come in and maybe provide professional development, do the progress monitoring piece to it. But really, our goal is to build the capacity of the people here for the, there to be a local commitment and ownership and investment of it, that takes the school through the improvement process to sustainability. And then we get to like call you up, or get emails from you, or read about you in the newspaper and, and all your accolades. So, it, it all depends.
I, I think another important piece to note is that quite often, when there's a success partner, it's because of something that might be mandated by the state, or because of lack of performance in certain areas. And when something is a forced change rather than a selected change, it can be a, make a big difference. You, we're using the analogy before about weight loss and, and, you know, you know, changing diet and changing exercise. If somebody is forced to go to the gym, the way that they participate there as opposed to their choosing to go to the gym, it's, we're going to have a different result. So, I think that the, the active participation by our teams in wanting to gain as much as politic, possible for sustainability and, and that knowledge there is, is going to be something that'll be an accelerator for us as well.
Rhonda. So, just to follow up, so it's almost never just a year, a school year, and then you just?
It really, it depends on the, the district. If you invite us to come back, we'll keep, we'll come back, and we'll, we'll take another assessment of, of progress to date, and we'll have another conversation around what, what are the services and supports do you think that you need? We, we responded to, to an RFP for this work. We'll respond again if, if another RFP comes out. So, it's really, if we, if we get invited to come back, we'll have another conversation around scope of work and deliverables, and what seems to make the most sense to support the work at the school.
But right now, what's in place is for this school year only.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I know that there's been a tremendous amount of work, and I think a, a real appreciation for everyone at Washington Middle School. Some of the things that, and I don't know if you can bring that forward with the whole child, but there have been some really great community parent pieces that I've been fortunate to be part of. The first little recital that was held, a lot of great parents and family and community came, and a grandmother stood there and said, this is the best school ever for my granddaughter. So, those are the kinds of things, too. And even when you had something in the cafeteria, I can't remember what that was, for, it was for the Finers or something. But, but I do think that sometimes those pieces don't come forward, and there's a tremendous amount of, of culture climate around, being built around this, that success. I have the, the opportunity every week, and I don't know if the board gets this, that Pete Ware sends out and shows us pictures and tells us stories about what's going on at Washington. It's a different lens, but you can see kids engaged and, and families often coming forward. So, there's a lot of, a lot of those pieces that, that have not come forward. But my hope, as you come each month, to, to bring some of that with you as well, because that really addresses the whole child, but also the whole school, you know? And, and there's a lot of, of very successful community members who went through Washington and went through house school and see this as a pathway. So, I'm, I'm really grateful. And, and just the other piece, the other piece of anecdotal information is when I was visiting last week, in these last several years, when I visited, a teacher's pulled me into the classroom, and they sometimes, they would always talk to me about behavior. This time, I had someone, in fact, a couple of teachers talking to me about their instruction, and could we do some things differently to change that instruction, to leverage what they were trying to do? So, that's a different conversation, too. So, it tells me that something is changing, and those are really powerful stories, so. And it was English Language Arts, so.
It wasn't me.
It wasn't me, but I, I just may have been where I was standing.
Just, just real quick, this was, I'm, I'm guessing that's one of the differences that we may have compared to other districts that Ted, you and others may have visited and air. Just, just mentioning that, you know, something that we, I think, might take for granted in, in Green Bay, that, hey, I saw people, I saw people doing some building maintenance custodial work during the day instead of just before and after school. And I think that's, that's something that I would venture to guess in many places that you go, there's probably contracted out cleaning in a majority of, of them, I would think is, is likely. And that's, that's a good, a good compliment, both to our staff, our custodial staff that you know, that coming from the outside, you notice and appreciate it. And it's also, it's also an, again, not that we brought you in for this, but it's, it's an acknowledgement from someone who's seen a lot of other ways things can be done, that to have your own sense of ownership in your, your buildings is, is important. And obviously, that was something that you noticed. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing, hearing none? Well, thank you for very much. You might want to allow more than thirty minutes for the next one.
So, again, related to the next steps, we'll continue to work on enhancing communication, consider next steps for possible mid-year co-interpretation. And I just wanted to say again, the efforts at Washington are a deeper opportunity for all of us to learn. We continue to capture AIR best practices of change acceleration for support and turnaround to build our capacity to serve all schools where trajectory change is needed to maximize student potential. We've changed our hiring practices. We're getting better about thinking about defining metrics of success, more focused efforts around school walkthrough. These are things that will have payoff, not just at Washington, but throughout the district. I want to say thanks especially to Cindy and her team, who has been a rock star and one of the hardest-working people with the biggest heart that I know. So, thank you.
Not me alone, that's for sure. Thank you.
I do see someone in the audience with his hand up, and I just, we're not really set up for this kind of a forum, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable.
Question here, or?
Just, go ahead, say your, say your question, and then I will ask the question.
Well, that's okay. I think I could. Yeah, I spent, for, just for background, I spent last year as a volunteer watching middle school, probably about four hours a week during the first semester and two hours a week during the second semester. And it is indeed a very daunting task to turn this school around. I mean, I, I quite agree. And I don't have the solutions, but I was, and, and the other volunteers that were there were unanimous that the level of disruption in and out of the classroom was just unbelievable. And I, I, you know, I noted the referrals, and that's quite, quite remarkable. And I'm just wondering if in fact the level of violence and fighting has declined. I'm aware that two of your staff members were sent to urgent care in a fracas with students. There, you know, the, just because you're not making referrals doesn't mean that the level of violence and disruption has necessarily declined. Can somebody speak to that point? Are there, are there, are there records about police contacts, for example? Nobody wants to speak to that point? It's, it's not a rhetorical question.
How, how do you want us to respond? I mean, we can engage, I mean, if you.
Respond as best you can and answer the question.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, I just wondered.
I was there last year, you know that?
Oh, I, I'm aware of that, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what level of violence there was last year. But just like, in, as happens in other middle schools that I've worked in, and other middle schools that I've been in, we have occasion where students get into disagreements and it becomes physical. Has that happened this year at Washington Middle School? It absolutely has. Do I like it? I absolutely don't. Do we take it very seriously? We absolutely do. Fighting is not anything that we tolerate and just walk away from. It creates unsafe environments for the two students involved, or more than two students involved, everybody around. And unfortunately, the fallout usually comes to staff, because there's not a staff member in our school that I, I don't think there's a staff member in our school that would just stand by and watch it happen. And so, they feel that obligation to protect children. So, I'm not going to comment on how many staff were injured or if staff were injured, because I think that's personal information for those staff. However, is it a big deal? It's a big deal. And do we like it? We absolutely don't.
Well, um.
Okay, Rob, I'm going to have to cut you off now.
One question?
One question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yes. We're going to pause for a break. Five-minute break.
All right. Good start again. Everybody's back. Go ahead, Kay, you're up.
All right. Chris has vowed to do this in less than fifteen minutes. New safety and security update.
Good afternoon. We're actually here tonight.
Good afternoon.
Oh, did I say that?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very good.
It's closer to good morning.
We are here this evening to provide the board with an update on three different topics. One is the school safety grant, which you've been made aware of for the second round. The other is an update on school safety communication. And then finally, what our recommendations are going to be moving forward with the SRO program. So, I'm going to start with Chris Cowler, talking about the safety grants, please.
Hello, everyone. So, just a quick update, round two of the school safety initiative, the district was awarded one million, one hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. And what we're going to be doing with that money is we are going to purchase additional security cameras, more than what we purchased with the round one of the grant. We're going to be looking to put security-resistant film on all the exterior doors of all the schools that didn't get it from round one. We are going to put in a new master key system for the exterior doors of our buildings, so we can have better key control. We are going to be purchasing some trauma-type first aid kits for all the schools that would help in, in major emergencies. We are going to be purchasing three-story escape ladders to be used in second and third-story classrooms for use, obviously, for fire-related issues, but also if we did have an active-shooter type situation in one of the buildings. We are looking to update the software and configuration of the current radios that we have, the portable radios, in addition to the ones that we purchased from round one of the grant. We are looking to put a secured entrance at the Manoka Hills School. We are looking to do some additional PA system upgrades, and then that money can be used to pay for any camera cost that we did not cover in round one. As later on, I'll explain, we're doing an RFP. If costs are higher than what we initially had believed, we can use round two money to offset that. As part of both of the grants, they do not come without some training requirements. Round one required the three hours of trauma training for all of our staff. Round two is requiring that ten percent of our full-time teaching staff and administrators are required to attend a twelve-hour adolescent mental health course. The state, that's about one hundred and seventy-six of our staff members. We've set aside budget from the grant funding to send two hundred of our staff members to this training. We've also been required to create school safety intervention teams and have members of those teams trained in threat assessments. And we've set aside money to pay one hundred and fifty staff members to attend that threat assessment team training. Those trainings will be, the threat assessment team and the adolescent mental health trainings will be posted here in our district next year. We will be doing two classes of fifty staff members at the twelve hours of mental health training, and we'll be hosting at least one course of up to one hundred and fifty, whether it be all of our staff or staff in other district, or other area, school districts that can come and attend that course. We have, we're in the process of completing the mandatory reporting of threats of school violence training. It's been shared out with all of our staff, and we are somewhere in the eighty percent of our staff have completed that training to this point. The next steps that we are moving forward with on November nineteenth, I'll be bringing forward the information on our RFP request for proposal on the security camera grant, so that we can move forward with starting of that project. And then later on in December, we are nearing the stretch run of our fifty site assessments that we've had to do this year. So, you'll have a report of all of those assessments in December for. forward the information on our R F P request for proposal on the security camera grant, so that we can move forward with starting of that project. And then later on in December, we are nearing the stretch run of our fifty site assessments that we've had to do this year. So, you'll have a report of all of those assessments in December for review, to be in compliance with the Act one forty-three requirements, along with any updates that we would need to make to our safety and security binder. Again, will be coming in December, so that we can be in compliance with the January one requirement for all those plans to be in place.
Just for clarification, all schools already do have a school safety team. So, when Chris mentions school safety intervention team are going to be created, it's just a change in the name, plus the addition of an SRO, which is a requirement of the grant, that they weren't part of our teams before.
The SRO wasn't a requirement of the grant?
The, yeah, the, what the state is required is, under these sit teams, these school safety intervention teams, you should have at least one administrator, one mental health professional, whether it be counselor, psychologist, and there should be law enforcement involvement in it. So, when we do threat assessments, those people should all be involved.
So, Ms. Sheldon? I'm coming into this late, I understand. And I know there's a grant, and I understand that there's grant requirements. Do we have a guiding document that, that communicates what our commitment is to safety, to sort of provide the, a foundational expectation for how we're going to do this work? Because what I'm, does that make sense? Because it, it would help me to understand that if we're going to be, for example, like putting surveillance cameras in, okay? We're gonna, we're gonna do that. Okay, but what our commitment is, is that we're going to intentionally do that in a way, so that kids don't feel like they're being watched, right? That, that that's part of the work. Do we have any sort of guiding document for this work that would help to explain the lens through which we are addressing school safety?
I think outside of the school safety binder, which I need to make sure you're, you're able to see that, not that I am aware of, that specifically lays out what I think you're asking for.
I just think that would be like helpful for the community, and to make sure that when we make decisions, it actually is grounded in like a deeper understanding of what our commitment is to students.
Would that be board policy?
It's, there's board policy around it. And then, again, with not just a grant, but it's whether you're a grant recipient or not, I think there's, I can count on one hand, there were districts, in the state public districts, that did not apply for the grant. There's a requirement that every district have an emergency operation plan that addresses prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. So, as far as the foundational, you know, you've got it in one eighteen oh seven saying what you have to have in place. Now, as far as operationally, you look at each of those five areas, and then it's up to the district. Oh, there aren't, there's guidance. I mean, there's a lot of guidance from FEMA, from, from the state as well, that says, these are the kinds of things you want to have in place to address each of these five critical areas. So, I think you'll find it in the emergency operations plan that the district has.
Okay.
And then going back again to what's that based on?
And I totally, and I, I appreciate you giving that feedback, 'cause I know that it's an area that you know deeply about. I'm thinking about it almost of like a bill of rights, like, this is what we commit to with our, because again, I'm just, I know we just started this conversation, I don't want to get into the weeds. My hair starts to stick up on my arms when we talk about this, because it can go into a very deep, dark place, right? Where it feels very restrictive.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's important for us to be able to demonstrate to our community that we're going to do what we need to do, the expectations of the grant or whatever, but at the same time, we're balancing that with the recognition that we're, we're, we're doing what's best with, for kids. Does that make sense, Michelle?
Yeah, I, I think it makes very good sense. And I know that when we do, we've done safety audits to make sure that we have the resources in place to be in compliance and, and even exceed those pieces. And I understand, having read and thought and listened to other superintendents in terms of when tough decisions are made and you have varied perspectives, to have those lenses, often they come in board policy. And so, maybe...
That's next.
That's next.
This is all included in the board policy that's being proposed?
Yeah, but I don't want a board, I mean, I want something that we can share with the community. That's, that's...
Right, but that's the governance that says, that's our direction. That's our, that's our beacon of light that says, follow that star. So, again, it does go back to board policy, and then of course, state statute that really drives that, from where, that's my, you know, understanding. I think the other piece too, though, is that the document itself really tells the story of the philosophy. When you read through the safety, the red book, you can really see where the thinking has gone in the past, and, and just the different pieces of how things are handled, you know, whether it be a student threat, or the, the passing of a student tragically, or the passing of a staff, it's all in there. And you start to see the different frames within that, in terms of where the district has gone. Is there an outward facing document, not that I'm aware of besides policy, that really is that lens that really sets the course of moving us forward?
Well, I, I just like, I mean, I think I'd, I'd like to go on the record and say, I think we need to have something like that. I think we need to have a one, something that demonstrates our commitment to balancing this with kit, what we need, what we know is needed for kids. And I think those documents are really great, Michelle. I think policy is really great. It guides our work, but it's not what works for community members and parents to understand why we do what we do. So, we don't have to make that decision today. I just think that that would be really helpful, because people want to know why we're making the decisions that we are. And we should be able to communicate to that in a very clear way. So, that's all.
No, I don't know if Chris would say this is true or not, but as I look at the list of the actual physical items we're purchasing because of the grant, these were all things, all the trauma, first aid kits probably weren't in on that either, but from the audits that we've done over the past probably ten years, these things were listed on there as requests from the schools to increase the safety.
Again, I think we can say that we want, we can, we can address that, but we also need to say that we're not going, that we are committed to kids, that we're not going to literally shut down their learning. There's a balance in it, that there's a balance in the work. That there is a, right?
I hope you're finding we're maintaining that with it.
Well, I, I don't know.
If anything, I would say that adding to the security of a school enhances the learning environment, making them feel comfortable and safe, that they can not have to worry about things happening in their building, and not have to worry if someone's coming through the...
Well, but I think that's a good point, though, and that's where I think we need to do, I would like to philosophically know what everybody believes when we say safety, 'cause I would actually disagree with you on, on what, how people feel about that. I mean, the school-to-prison pipeline is a real thing, and there is, there are actually research-based outcomes when we push too far to lock it down. So, there is a place at which that is, there is a tipping point, where we manufacture fear. So...
I, I think if you look at these things, and I know exactly what you're talking about, and I agree with you, these are very unobtrusive. I mean, if you're talking about the cameras, I mean, they're, they're discreet, and they're, they're more forensic than anything else. They're, they're not used for surveillance, and nobody's sitting there, you know, watching to see if Ed Dorf is smoking in the boys' room. I mean, that, that, that's not happening. Uh, and I've read some of the things that you, you know, particularly some studies that came out of California, the effect on learning that things like barbed wire fences around schools and metal detectors have had.
Right.
And there are, unfortunately, there are districts that have that, and thank God, we're not one of them. But, uh, take a look at what we're talking about, radios for communication, you know, the intrusion-resistant glass laminates, very unobtrusive. I'd be interested in, you know, knowing what, what other concerns you might have, though, around, around the things that we've got there, 'cause I don't see anything here that, that should have any negative impact on, on learning.
Sure, but I'm just saying, we can do a better job of getting out in front of that, if that's the truth, and we're not watching people. I mean, it says here, additional security cameras, there's no, I think people have concerns about what that actually means, if, if, who's watching it, who has access to that, you know, that film, or whatever we're calling it. But, this can just be a very slippery slope, and I think we need to help the community understand why we're doing and how we're doing it.
I have a question. You mentioned for the grant, that there's, the, the school security team is renamed, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then you mentioned that there has to be an officer, a school police officer.
That's a part of the team, yes.
Yep, so are we implementing this as part of the grant and part of the requirement? Do we have to have these teams in every single school? Are we now including elementary schools as well?
Yes, they have to be in every school. We can have one team cover multiple schools, but I believe what, how we'll do it is, each school will have a team, and then either an SRO would be assigned to be a part of that team, depending on the area that they're in.
And when you say, and when you say the team, is it just a team that gets together and meets about safety, or is it an actual presence in the school?
No, it's, it's a team that's made up of, we either have a counselor or social worker, oftentimes both, the building, principal, A Ps. Sometimes teachers are involved, but the meetings typically happen during the school day. So, the only addition that I know of right now would be just including an officer.
And, and the answer, I guess, would be kind of both, because they, it wouldn't be specific to one thing. I mean, they would be used for many different things that we have now, when it relates to doing safety drills, or students in crisis. But the specific focus of these teams has to do with threat assessments. So, if there are threats of the school, then these threat, these sit teams are involved in the threat assessment process of that. So, if, an SRO might not be involved in every aspect that this safety team is a part of on a daily basis, but what they're talking about specific to threat assessments, they need to be a part of that. And yes, those teams are required to meet at least quarterly and discuss, you know, how they're gonna be working on things, or if there's different activities going on in different buildings, or that building that they work on. But they're, they're multi-level. It's not the same group all the time, because you could have a counselor that's in that school one or two days a week, and then a psychologist one or two days a week, and then someone else, and they're all a part of that team, but they're there at different times. So, it can change.
Okay, and, thank you. So, are we going to, for the elementary level, are we going to pull a, a school police officer from a middle and high school to come into there, or is this in actual, with this safety team, do we have to now hire an additional officer? We can pull it from...
If we can have access to a school resource officer, if, and there's an imminent need, we call the, either emergency or non-emergency, and one of the patrol officers come to the school, and they would work in that capacity.
But, just so I'm clear, so these teams that are in the elementary schools, the officer that's part of that team is going to be coming from another location? It's not going to be that there's an officer now in the school?
We already have SROs that are assigned to quads, so it's our K through twelve buildings. With, that's our existing SROs.
So, is that right now? We're not, with the grant, we're not adding, they're not asking us to add?
We cannot add SROs as part of the grant, no.
You know, as I, as I look at that particular process, there's absolutely nothing new in there, as far as the way we've been operating. We've had, you call it a, a risk assessment, a threat assessment, a student assistance team, basically is what it is. We've had those in place for years and years and years. We've got a protocol, there's been a protocol in our, in our safety security binder, again, for many years, that addressed assessing threats. And I'm not even crazy about that language, because when DOJ talks about threat assessment, and they talk about having law enforcement, they're talking about the worst-case scenarios, they're talking about the potential shooter, that, that sort of thing. To be effective, I think, these teams are effective, because they look at all manner of, you know, students in crisis, what's going on. And again, think in terms of the student assistance team. That's basically what it is. And really, the only time you're gonna involve law enforcement is when you've got a concern about kid with a weapon gonna harm somebody, and there's nothing new there. I mean, that, that's the way we've, we've been operating.
So, Ed, to go on that, and I'm glad you brought that up, because is that actually one of the only times we bring in a, a school police officer? I mean, I mean that as an honest question, because I recently heard from a parent in the district who has a nine-year-old, a fourth grader, who has a documented behavioral disability and had a school, and I'm not gonna call them a school resource officer, I, I personally don't like that language. I know that that's the language in this, in this document. I think it normalizes it, and it sanitizes it for me. And I'm just gonna be honest with you guys. Is that what we want to do? Do we want to call a, a school police officer in to deal with, and this, this child was not, and I agree with you, I think there are times where we need, that the, the threat is real, and we need to bring them in. And I ask this honestly, is that what we want to do? Because this plan, when I read this plan, it's a double down on creating a system where we are going to see more kids get caught up in the policing of our community.
I, I don't know what the, obviously, I don't know what the situation is with the nine-year-old there, but if it was a, if it's a behavioral issue in the school, it should be dealt with in the school.
Right, but as we, but...
I think it's been, it should have been clarified that you, you bring law enforcement in when it's, when it's an issue for law enforcement, now when it's an issue of school rules.
But what it, but what do, but, but as we expand this program, we are looking to our law enforcement to do more of that work. It shifts it away. It does. I mean, here's the deal. Last year, we just had a, we just, there's a recent research that just came out that said that we have a two-point-six percent increase in our Wisconsin prison population. Two-point-six percent. Our black students are two times more likely than white students to receive a referral or be arrested by law enforcement. By most markers, Wisconsin is the worst state for black students. And we know that these things, and I'm, I'm being honest in here, I don't see any equity, and I'm wondering where the lens is when we do this work, where we honor the fact that we have students that we know through the research are going to be disproportionately impacted by these, by, as we double down and as we expand. And I'm just being honest, and I'm being courageous, and I'm telling you what my concerns are.
So, give me an example where, if you were to make this your perfect document, what would be in here that would represent the equity?
It would be to, to, to not be expanding and working with the Green Bay Police Department as part, as a, as bringing them in, and, and having SROs do our disciplining, discipline. They are.
Where does it say that?
I mean...
Because we've had a, we had a very intentional, probably, three, four years ago, where we, we were having some trouble with that, and we, we made very clear delineation of what administrators are, should be calling the police officers for help, and also the fact that the police officers do not come in unless they've been invited in by the administrators.
Correct. Okay.
I don't know that that's a hundred percent, you know, happens that way every time, but that's, but that's what we've, what we changed, because we knew that that was, that that was part of our equity.
But they're being, but they're there, and they're being invited in, and it's still happening. And, and I'm not saying this, 'cause I think anybody is a bad, I think we're all here for kids. I believe, I, you guys, we're in this together. Like, we, we believe in this district. It's, this is not a personal, I'm, I'm concerned about our kids, and especially looking at the statistics. And as we expand and get more money from the state, and what it means for us, and the direction we have to go, I really am asking us, like, are we committed to this, and is this what we want to do? And is this what's best for kids? That's the question I'm asking, and it's not personal.
So, is that the...
I like all of you personally.
Don't take it personally. Um, just to comment on the incident, of course, we can't talk specifics, but the direction administrators have been given is that if police are called in, if this, it's harm to themselves, the student themselves, or to others, that's beyond their ability to manage as an administrative team.
For a fourth grader? And, and I'll tell you what, the, the police officer also said, that he was going to need to handcuff the fourth grader till the parent got there. So, I, I'm sharing this again, not to throw anybody under the bus, but to highlight why I am concerned about the work that we're doing.
Understood.
Thank you.
Andrew.
So, just to clarify, Christina, though, when we have, so I would, if, if we were picking, you know, I, we've, I think I've gotten valuable input on, on things from our school police officers, and many cases, sometimes I've agreed, sometimes I haven't. If it were, if we're, if it were up to me on how school districts, you know, state-managed, you know, state-issued security grants would go, I've always, no surprise to anyone, that I think school districts should be able to have who they feel appropriate to have on the committees, maybe have a school resource officer and, and maybe not. But we don't have, we don't have that choice. So, if we want to get the million dollars of, of round two, we have to do that. But given, given that, it seems to me, I'd have to agree with Ed, it seems, now, if, if you're looking deeper into the SRO situation, but I mean, as far as the grants, is there anything you see problematic there?
Well, I think you bring up a good point, that a lot of it is driven down by, by the system, right? I mean, you're kind of... I mean, you're kind of put in a position where you either take the money or you don't, and so-
There's things we could, I mean, there's things we could buy that would make a school feel very unwelcoming in the name of security, and those aren't yet. I'm, I'm not, and there's a lot of things we could buy that I think I would be saying, yeah, let's not do that, but I think we're picking pretty smart things, technology solutions. Not that I don't have, now, but if, if the, if this update is also about the overall relationships with SROs and who's doing what, I think I would share some of your concern probably there. I just don't have concerns about what I see on the grant items list here.
Michelle.
If, if you look at the district recommendations for consideration, at the very end, I think one of the pieces, because we continue and, to meet on a pretty regular basis with the police department, and the responsiveness particularly from the chief has been very good in terms of having conversations, and these very conversations about the role of a police officer in our schools, and the recognition that we are not really interested in making sure that our schools are safe, that's, that's a huge priority, the safety of each and every child, but also not wanting to create an environment that is so intrusive it feels like you're not in school anymore. So, that's a very important part of that. One of the things, if you read in the, the last bullet, or the last point, and I don't know if it's up there, it talks about how we're going to collaborate to really do a deeper dive into the school resource officers in terms of making sure that the, the program evaluation is in partnership with, and it talks about looking at that scope of evaluation, making sure that we have the, the effectiveness of the actions taken to implement the goals that we have shared. And I think one of the things that, that, when I, I'm fortunate to be in schools at times where I see huge value in the school resource officer being present and supporting a safety environment that doesn't, doesn't feel intrusive, but it is needed at that point in time, it's just a timely thing, where that resource officer just may be present and it, and it works out very well for the safety and well-being of the student, and, and the school, and other students as well. So, but really looking at how do we ensure that we have that, and I think it goes back to what are we saying to our public? It goes back to making sure our, it's positive, it's safe, and supportive of the school climate as intended, as opposed to a negative in that school climate. So, that's, so that evaluation will be very important, and certainly the board can be, is going to hear that report and make decisions from that report.
Correct.
Rhonda.
So, I think it's very important to recognize that even though a lot of us may feel safer seeing the presence of a, a police officer, there are a lot of people in our community that that is actually, does the exact opposite thing.
Yeah.
I think we have to recognize that, and that our version of safety is not theirs. And I think when we talk about collaborating, looking into, I, I have a lot of questions about this, this conversation in general, that we're discussing, the, the Green Bay Police Department did an analytical review of themselves, which is interesting, on its own. Says, they did an analytical review of efficiency and efficacy with how they are operating in the schools. How, what did, I mean, do we have that, and how did they actually come to those conclusions? What did they use? Do they, do we share data with them, with our students? Did they really actually objectively review themselves? And if, if that's what they're doing, and then we're collaborating with them, I would hope that right off the bat, that there are a lot of questions about that, because I think if you look into the community, I think you may have concerns about the Green Bay Police Department, I know I do. So, I, I'd like to think that we're going to be pretty, we're going to command this collaboration, we're not going to let them drive it. Because right now, they're, based on their analytical review, they want us to invest in training for them, they want us to increase officers, three to four, in elementary schools, and they want additional data collection. When I see these things, I hope that's not just something they just get to have. It's nice that they want all of these things, but I, I think at the end of the day, that, that is, that specifically really, I'm very unnerved by that, especially the fact that a police department does its own review. Unless I'm reading that wrong, I think that's very interesting. And if we're considering collaborating with them at this point, for I'm not sure what, if anything, I would say, if we're going to have police officers in our schools, we should be deciding who's going to evaluate them, and we should be actually doing that. It shouldn't be something that they do themselves.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly what number five is.
Yep. Okay. That's, but I, it's-
I think the word collaborate.
The collaborate, yeah, maybe that's what it is. I think it's really interesting in itself, of all the things we need to do every day, um, yeah. And the development of an oversight committee to review the, the school resource officer program, I just, I have a lot of concerns about the police policing themselves, personally. You know, we have an increase of expulsions, significant increase this year, and so when I, when I see even, the fact that we're even spending time talking about this, it's, it really concerns me a lot. And I'm not sure who's going to be on this oversight committee. I sure would love to be.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead. That's it, I just wanted to share, because she, you mentioned that, and there's, that's, that's where all my concerns are, it's all in that whole-
We're, we're looking for guidance from the board, which is why we're bringing this to you. For, number one, the development of the oversight committee, we're looking for board members, parents, staff, administrators, and then getting feedback from students as well. The focus will be to look at the purpose, goals, and measures. The collaboration for supervision and communication improvement, it's been noted to be an issue this year in particular, so we want to improve upon that. For the SRO's training, we felt for a very long time that it would be beneficial if police officers in our schools had the same trainings that our staff are receiving, for a variety of reasons. So, we would welcome them to the trainings that our, our staff are already receiving. The data collection is focused on how are we measuring the purpose of the program and its successfulness? So, that's where we would need to collaborate with the, the sharing of data. And then lastly, yes, they did a program evaluation, we want to do our own. So, we are going to seek the assistance from Dr. Stramp to facilitate an evaluation of the program before we make any changes, which would be consideration of including or not including more staff.
I can imagine their, their review is public.
Yes, ma'am, it was shared with you.
I don't, and, and she had mentioned that, I don't remember, I just, I missed it. I'm not saying you didn't send it, I just missed it. Shall I re-send?
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do you have specific guidance, Vicki, in language around what school police officers, very clear guidance on when they are responsible for getting involved?
The two circumstances I shared earlier, harm to self or others, but they have to be called in by admin before they step in.
I believe that. Is that in the contract, Melissa? It is, isn't it?
There's a lot of gray area, though. I mean, there's going to be gray area, I get it. It's not going to be black and white. I, I just, I, we need to be moving away as much as possible from having our school police officers being responsible for school discipline. My concern is, my concern is, and I'm not saying anybody disagrees, I'm not saying that I'm like going rogue here, but that is, needs to be a commitment to our community. That needs to be a commitment, and we need to be sharing that to people.
And I think we have shared it with the administrators, I think it's been a focus since I've been here, to make sure that they understand what the, what the purpose of the SRO is, what they're, when they should be utilizing, when they shouldn't, and I think there's been a shift in that. We've been pulling them out of situations that they shouldn't have been involved in in the first place.
I appreciate that, Chris, because what I'm hearing from, from what I'm talking with people, is that they're feeling the opposite, and I'm not saying what you're saying, it isn't true. I, I total, but people are concerned, and when, when you hear about teachers feeling like that's what they need to do, and that's their first line of defense, again, this is, I'm just relaying what I'm hearing, that's a concern for me.
I think what could be part of the problem is, you have your SROs, which we have 11 of them, and if they're not available, we're bringing in officers off the street, which are different than our SROs. So, the scenario that you were explaining makes me think that it wasn't an SRO that was involved with it, it was an officer off the street who may not work in the same capacity that our SROs. They may not understand how school opportunities function.
It was an SRO.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, again, I, I believe you're doing good work, but it is concerning to me.
But we're going to collaborate, we're going to, sorry.
Michelle.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
The, the piece I want to be sure of, in the first bullet point, Vicki, is you talked about the, the community representation, and to Rhonda's point, I don't want that lost, having been just recently in a couple of places and having those same conversations about the fears and concerns, and I've talked to mothers who are very worried about their sons being pulled over and, and so forth, and I, I just think that that is a very important voice. I, you know, and I, I do think, I think, Christine, you said it, it's about balance, it's about making sure that we have the resources and supports in place to be able to be responsive in a, in a crisis or safety needs, while at the same time making sure that we're, we're respecting and supporting each and every child we serve. So, I, I, I think it's real important to make sure all voices are in that group. That would be really good. I have a name for you, at least one of them.
Okay.
Rhonda, yeah?
Okay, so if, if we are going to collaborate and get together and have this think tank about adding, subtracting, shifting, whatever, the, the police presence that we, we have in our schools, and you mentioned, you know, there might be times when there's another officer that comes in off the street, and they don't have the same approach, or possibly, that's a huge conversation to have about the fact that with the police department, if we're going to, if you have officers coming to our schools, understand that there's expectations. I mean, that is something I think the chief has to reiterate, and I'm hopeful that with this collaboration that we can, we can mention that, because I have heard other things as well, where it's, you know, throwing a kid to the ground in handcuffs in front of a school when parents are picking up their, their students, is a really shocking and offensive thing to see on school grounds, and even if you, it makes you think about safety and in the aspect of, well, this school isn't even safe, because look at that, I feel like it's an episode of Cops. You know, they need to make sure when they come and they're, they're handling our students, that they remember, I don't know, I think there's like this big free range for them to just handle something, and it's just, you know, it's kind of like, basically, it's what they, it's what they do, and it's, I don't know. There's, there's definitely, I think we need to discover what we know, and what we feel like the word safety really and truly means, because that's something that we all feel here, and that is not necessarily the way the community is, is looking at it. And somehow, we have to, and when we looked at those two engagement sessions that we had after the press conference with the chief, if you looked at all, everything that people were writing down on those, those pieces of paper, it really, it told a story that the community really wants to be welcome, and more, and, you know, they want to feel like a warm welcome, they don't want to feel like they're being policed. And especially, if an admin calls a student, or calls a police officer for a student, if that student is undocumented, what do we just do? And I think we have to think about, really, what our, who our community is before we start just, you know, calling officers, and, and how are we getting to that point in the first place? Because it's, it could happen that we, we just help deport a student. I don't know, I-
There's a lot of ramifications for those decisions.
There are, there are a lot of unintended consequences that I hope, when we do this collaboration, that we really think about when we move forward. And you might think everything I said exactly the way I said it, but I, again, I would like to go on record saying that of all the things we really need for safety, when I think about safety, I think about not what if, if something happens, it's what's literally happening. And what are we doing to invest in these kids while they're in the building first? Before waving people in. I'm done.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Laura.
Laura, sorry.
I'm not sure who to address this to, but I'll, I'll address it to you, Vicki. Can you speak a little bit about what, how teachers-
That you come in contact with, and you're, you know, you're in schools all the time, how teachers feel about the SROs? Do you, do you get feedback from teachers on that?
Teachers and administrators.
Yeah. Can you speak just a little bit about that?
My experience has been that they're only called in in extreme situations where the admin no longer feels like they can control the situation and ensure safety. Teachers are okay with that. I don't know how else to say it.
Thank you.
Andrew.
I think what's, what's important to me, and I think, I think there's probably, you know, when it, when it comes right down to it, I, I would be willing to guess, though I'm just an individual, independent elected official, but I, I bet the seven of us are probably not wildly far apart about issues such as overpolicing, I, I think if, we, I, I'm, would think it very likely that none of us want that. I think what I'd like to see, though, is, you know, you, it is kind of, kind of weird, and not weird in the sense of unexpected, because it's, it's completely expected, that you have the, the police department who has us paying for 11 of their 11 officers that they hire and they control. We have some, some limited input into this, but that one of their recommendations from their internal review is we'd like to increase our staff by three to four with your money. Now, that's, and maybe that's what, maybe that's the number they think that's right, but it's not, it's not as strong of a recommendation as, we're so committed to this program, we're going to add three on our expense, right? It wasn't, it wasn't that, so it's a lot, it's really easy to recommend that if you're, you know, writing your own proposal to do with another agency's money. So, given that, you know, I would like to see, if we're paying for all of the salaries, however it happens behind the scenes, whatever, whatever legal things have to be worked out, when we re-up this, I want, I want more district control over the program, and I want more district control over the, over the people, and I, in the event, and I'm not saying that I know of any times where this has happened, but if there, if there is an officer that, for whatever reason, we don't want to be an SRO anymore, I think we need to have the right to have that person not be an SRO. They might be, someone might end up in an SRO position- They might be, someone might end up in an SRO position and for one reason or another, we might decide as we see fit as a district that they not be one anymore, then great, they're a City of Green Bay police officer. They can, might be a very good officer doing something else and not be an SRO. So I, that's what is important for me. I want to see that control so that when I see, I don't want there to be a situation that would come to us and only for me to hear that unfortunately due to the regulations, we can't reassign them or move.
Actually, I believe that has happened.
That has happened. That has happened.
But probably only because they agreed to it. I mean, we can't make, we can't call the shots, can we?
I'm looking.
Okay.
In the meantime, I think if we, I'm just, as I'm rereading the district recommendations and considerations, I think putting this plan in action will get us to where we've all discussed we want to be. That was the intent.
And I think we can address everyone's concerns if as a board we approve these.
I question though. What was the reason?
Go ahead.
What was the reason? Did we ask them to review themselves? Did they review themselves and say, here, we want to put three, four more? Officers in? Like where, how did this even happen and where did this come from and why are we talking about it?
Yeah, I was approached by Captain Marasky. I want to say it was maybe February, March about the last time the program had actually been evaluated. And it's been quite a while, a formal evaluation. And I shared with him at the time that we didn't have the capacity to embark on such a big project because as you know, we, we take our researcher programs very seriously and it's extensive. So they chose to move forward with a, a less formal evaluation. No written surveys, but interviews of administrators and the SROs themselves. We felt we could do a more extensive job of it by having Dr. Stramp help us out moving forward.
Yeah, and so when I, and when we talk about that, we think about parents as well.
Right, right. And, and students.
And students.
A diverse student population to your point earlier.
The various stakeholder groups. Michelle. I think one of the things, we've had many conversations with the chief and, and the team about some of the concerns that are being raised here at the table. I think that, that the piece that I hear is that especially with the chief in particular is I believe he's open to some changes, at least going down that road. That's my takeaway. I, I, the conversation about who should be a school resource officer and who shouldn't because we have school resource officers in our schools that are seen as a, a really very positive. You can watch it because the kids interact, everyone's, and it just feels like part of the team. And they walk out and be part of the school and they understand the nuances in the schools. And they often have the history of families and can intervene in very positive ways to support that school. And so that's the piece that we've talked about is not everyone, just because it looks like a good job, should have that good job because it's a very different job than, than being a police officer on the beat. It's a, it's a nice job to be able to interact with families, but it's, it takes a special. In my experience, it takes special characteristics qualities. And I believe that we were very involved, correct me if I'm wrong, with Manoka, with the police liaison officer that participated or is currently at Manoka because of the special circumstance. But each child in each school is unique. So, you know, that kind of effort.
We did revamp the way that we hire SROs. In the past, the police departments maintained the larger number of the panel. Now the district does. That was about three years ago that we put that in place. Also, the length of time that the officer has been an officer was always one of the highest raters on whether that person could be an SRO or not. We made modifications to that. It does still play a role, but not as significant. Instead, we take them through some scenarios and use a rubric to rate how they would perform in certain situations involving our schools. And that weighs the heaviest portion of whether that person will become an employee.
Christine. I just want to go back to Michelle, what you were saying. You know, I think there's always going to be good people doing really good work, right? There's great police officers. There's great SROs. There's great, you know. But, and I say this all the time, form follows function. When we hire more SROs, they do their work through the lens of an SRO. That's what their lens is. That's who they are. That's what they've been trained to do. But you know who can do all the things that you just said, Michelle, which I think are great points? Relationship building, crisis management, identifying, you know, when there could be a problem. You know who can do, you know who can do all those things? And I know it doesn't fit into the budget, John, so I know you're going to jump in and say, but we can't. But you know who can do those things? Community intervention workers, social aides, counselors and social workers. And those people are not going to be doing their job through the lens of police training. And so I just think it's very important that when we, again, I'm not saying SROs are bad people or a police off, they're doing their job through the lens through which they do it. And I think we need to be committed to recognizing that form follows function. And when we have increasing inequities in our discipline statistics, we need to look at the, what we're doing and what we're contributing or not contributing to those practices. That's all I'm going to say.
Any other questions or comments?
The last piece is we're always working on improving communication during school safety and security events. So I'd like to turn it over to Lori Blakesley to talk a little bit about the current practice and how we can work towards improving.
So we're going to be sharing a table with you with some proposed ideas. So I shared in the document our current, where things currently are. And to give you also some of the parameters around which we work. I think it's important to recognize that my department does take equity very seriously. And so that is one of the things we look at when we think about how do we communicate to families when there is a situation. So I did share with you some data regarding primary languages and how many are identified in the various areas as their primary language that the family speaks, as well as the fact that not all households have email, which we've known. And so there's about 1,500 families that don't currently have an email address. So when we think about, you know, how do we reach families when there's a situation that's occurring and what, you know, so I always say that we can be fast, but we can't be fast and equitable like it doesn't happen. And that's a, that's a resource issue. In my department, we are very fortunate. We also made it a priority when we hired our last two administrative assistants now that being bilingual in Spanish was a requirement so that we could always translate things in Spanish because sometimes these situations don't always happen at a convenient time, right? It might be right at the end of the day. And so having that resource right in my department to translate is very important. However, we do not have a Hmong or Somali translator in my department. We have district translators, but they're not also always in the building. They may be assigned out to a school and so not necessarily readily available. And so when we look at the current notification system we have, we have a very robust and one of the best parent notification systems that's out there. It actually came into the district prior to my arrival. It actually was with Alan Benke when he was in the safety office. So it was not necessarily in the house, housed in the communication department. After Alan left, we moved it to my department as far as budgeting and, and managing the contract and things like that. And so this, but I thought it was important because I think a lot of questions always come up about this, to really lay out just what are the, what are the factors around it as far as being able to actually get messages out. And so when we send out an email or a text message because we use the shortened number, all families get that at the exact same time. So when we get the report, you can see all the email addresses, all the cell phone numbers, and it'll all be timestamped the same time. The, the problem that we have, and I, I don't think any system can resolve that issue because it just takes time to make phone calls, is the automated phone calls. And so once you put that into the system, it's going to take a certain amount of time to process those phone calls depending on how many phone calls it's making. And so if it's an emergency situation, it's not only then calling the phone number identified with the student, it's also calling all of their emergency contacts, which is what that's set up to do, right? So that, that's why we as parents give that information is here are the other people we want contacted if there's an emergency. The way the system was set up when I started here was that the phone, the system will call that number four times before to leave a message. We reduced that down to three to try to help with the, getting the calls out. We can always modify that again, but that was the way it was set up when, when I came here. So one of the biggest concerns I think that we run into is especially when we look at our outside secure the building situations. They are a tricky situation for us to handle because sometimes they last a half hour, sometimes they last five minutes. And the issue becomes is that when we try to get that information, so what usually happens for us is unlike our inclement weather notices, which all of you get as well, we can have all that pre-programmed because everybody gets the same message. Everybody's told there's no school today or tomorrow. And so we can pre-translate that, pre-record it on phone messages. It's all set to go push of a button. But I can't do that because I don't know what building tomorrow is going to have secure the building. I don't know if it'll be multiple buildings. And so while we have all of our scripts written, we have them all translated for email, for text messages, I still need a human to record that message on the phone. And so that means we need to track down that translator. We need to get them up to speed on what's happening. And that can take the same amount of time that secure the building situation took. And so, so that's one of the things that, that we run into is sometimes for us, it just ends up, we end up sending a message saying that we were in secure the building because there just was no way to physically get that message out prior. And so we can do things such as send it out in all the other ways other than a phone call. I think the issue though, we have to recognize is that not everybody gets it then because not everybody has an email. Now, I would say that in some ways, we're not reaching everybody anyway because I know that I hear from buildings where they often don't have the most up-to-date contact information for families. And so they'll both, they will run through the whole chain of numbers and can't reach anybody. So we know not all of our students also have the most current phone numbers. But I do feel though that by the phone calls, in most situations, we are reaching people. We did a very big campaign at the beginning of the school year to try to get parents to sign up for texting. Because of SCC regulations, we can't just make everybody get a text message. They have to opt in. And so we did a billboard campaign, we did websites, we did in, in school newsletters. We, so we really tried to get the message out there that we really want parents to opt in. We went down with it a little. We'll come back up again in a little while again to try to again remind parents. And as you may have seen, I believe I was communicating with you, that November 14th is the first time we ever tried this, which is we're going to do a test of the system. Because what we want parents to know is that if they don't have those up-to-date contact information, that's how you're going to find out. So if on November 14th, you don't get a text from us, an email from us, or a phone call, we don't have your correct contact information. And so if you want to find out when school's canceled because of bad weather, it'll be a good idea to get in touch with either your school secretary or our help desk and get that information updated. So we felt that this year we would give that a try and see how that goes as a way to ensure that people are getting those messages because they are important.
We had talked about, about the actual message itself. Are we always going to state it's an outside situation?
When it's an outside situation, we either say it's a community situation, an outside situation. Yes.
So we're always going to do that?
We've communicated on our website and we've also provided blurbs for principals to put in their newsletters. So parents understand what that situation means, right? Because we, you know, we monitor our Facebook page. We post those things on our Facebook page and we see the comments that parents make. And, you know, and sometimes you can get a sense that parents are really concerned, right? And so we always make sure to respond to those as well as we've been trying to be proactive with the newsletter articles saying that, you know, when there's an outside situation, the majority of the time, school happens as they normally would, right? We've had some situations where perhaps there's a situation outside and so we've been asked to move kids maybe out of a room because of the windows there on that side of the building. So those kids will still be having class, but they may not be having them in their classroom. But school will continue as normal. And then we have messages created for situations where it might be inside the building, right? So an example of that that happened since I've been here is we had a staff member who needed to be removed by, with the medical professionals. And so at that time, they locked everybody in their classrooms and they were not able to exit during what would have been passing time until those emergency professionals could get in, remove that staff person safely without having the hallways all clogged up. So.
Okay, but if that message went out to families, you wouldn't just say it's an inside the building situation. There would be an additional information so that people don't actually think there's an active shooter in the building, right?
Well, so, so that depends.
Because if I got that message, I would die.
So we have changed our practice somewhat. I think that's what we're looking for clarification for tonight. Because we used to, for majority situations, something would go out usually at the end of the day explaining what happened. And then many board members, just like we did in my office, you know, heard from parents on Facebook, you know, people want to know as soon as it's happening. But then in that situation, I, I don't have all the details either, right? So, so I might hear, I get the text message, we need to put this school in secure the building. I don't know why it's insecure the building, right? We're just, you know, I mean, not till we gather and we meet and we all talk and we get the information from the police and find out what's going on. I don't have all the details. And it wouldn't necessarily be my information to share. And so, so that's kind of the, the quandary that I feel like our department is in is that as we have tried to be very proactive and communicate faster, I think then people do feel concerned about what's happening because before they used to get an information that kind of shared. Once we knew all the facts, could provide all the facts, here's what happened today. So.
So they don't, so who actually, who ultimately gives you that message that you have to go and secure the building in the first place? Chris, you want to talk about that?
So how, how it works is a secure the building for an outside situation means that there's something going on in the community. It's not directly affecting our school, but we're making you aware of it so that you can restrict movement in and out. What happens is if law enforcement or someone has something going on, I'm notified that, for example, they're conducting a search warrant in this hundred block of this street. It's close to these buildings. Can you put those buildings in a secure the building situation until we're done with our search warrant? When, or we make the, the building clear or safe. So then I'd be told where it was occurring. I would then notify those buildings of what's happening, that the police department is conducting a search warrant in this area. They want you to secure the building for an outside situation. And then when they're done with their activities, they'll let us know when it's all clear.
So you, you know to do this because you were told there's a search warrant. So I guess that's my question. And that's been kind of, that's, the messages that I've gotten have been because of that. So you're, you're knowing that there's an actual outside situation and that's why you're told to tell the building leadership or the district to do that. So then that message seems like it should be pretty easy to just say, there's an outside situation. So that should, I would imagine, be easier than to give to the parents right off the bat, right? Because I think what's happened is, you know, so-and-so comes up to the school, they have to pick up their child because there's a dentist appointment or something. All they have is a message that they can't get into the school and they don't know why. They don't know if it's an outside or inside situation. And so it sounds like when you get notification from the police, you know, I mean, they know why they're telling you to go and secure in the, in the building because they're, that's why they're calling you.
Our message has always said it's for an outside situation. When we send it, if that's the situation, if the message does say it's for either a community or outside situation.
You're saying you can't be specific about inside situations always.
Right, correct.
This is where we're looking for some guidance.
Or.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, or even outside situations because they change.
Right. So sometimes what comes in as what the police are originally stating is the issue, doesn't always end up being that half hour later. And so that's why I never feel like it's my place to share what the police are dealing with because I don't have all the facts. And oftentimes the person who's letting Chris know may know a piece of it, but doesn't know all of it or the situation hasn't completely developed quite.
What's the, what's the principal's role in disseminating the information using school messenger?
So, so today's a perfect example. So we had a situation at Webster. I believe you received the email that went out to, in the letter that went out to families. So what happened with that was I was contact asked if I would help craft something, but then the principal was responsible then for sending it out. So she initiated it, because I didn't, obviously didn't know there was an issue, initiated it and then sent it out.
Are there any limitations on principal's authority to use the school messenger system?
No, other than they can only send it to their school.
Understood then, okay. Understood then, okay. Well, let me tell you a story here, okay? This is 2009, a number of years ago. I was principal at East High School. And we got a message, the police had wanted us to, we use the term lockdown at the time, lock down all the schools in the east quadrant area. Didn't know why. And as soon as we put out that announcement, and I think it was level two lockdown, level three lockdown that we used at the time, as soon as I got on the P A system and said, look, we've got a lockdown, we're going to continue on as normal, but nobody leaves the building, the phones started ringing off the hook because every kid was texting the message home, understandably. As soon as I got the information about what was going on, I let the staff know through email I got on the P A system, said, check your email right now, staff. They did. And in the email, I said, I'm going to make this announcement in 30 seconds. I announced what was going on and then told the kids, take your phones out of your pockets and your purses and text the message home. The message got out, you know, immediately I followed it up with, with school messenger right away. I think people just need to be empowered to get the messages out, get, get as much information out as you can. Obviously, you're not going to do something to compromise a situation. I'm not going to, you know, as a principal, I wouldn't say the police are serving a search warrant on Cherry Street. I mean, that, that would be irresponsible. But, you know, to get the information out there that, you know, police are conducting activity, they ask us to keep people inside, bingo.
And that's why what our message says is that parents should continue to check social media and our website. Because as we do get reliable, verified information in, I mean, we do keep updating it. So like a perfect example, which affects us directly, was the Mercury situation at Lincoln. Message went out to families, and then as we had updates all day long, rather than continuing to bar, bar families with phone calls, we kept updating that information, we kept sharing it with the media. And then, and then when we had to then let them know what the reunification process would be, that's when we did another phone call.
Another example would be earlier this year, we had a situation near Washington, East and Menoka, lasted about five minutes. And 20 minutes later, we had another situation at the same residence that lasted another five minutes. So when the first message was put out, instead of putting out a whole nother message, it was an update to that message saying, again, we went into another situation like this for basically the same thing. And a lot of the cases, they're happening so quickly, by the time we're getting the information out, it's already over with.
And I would say that all of those conversations are held with the principal. I mean, so when we, so when we have a situation that's to the, to the degree where we call, what we call incident command, and we all come together, the principal's on the phone with us. And so the principal isn't excluded from those conversations at all.
Well, I'm not saying they're excluded. I, I want to make sure that principals understand they have the authority to, to get on the school messenger, whatever, whatever means they have, and that they get the message out, that they don't have to wait for permission to get that out, or they don't have to wait for you to put it out.
And I think what we found is that they appreciate that we take care of that from our office because we're the ones running down the translators to get things translated. And they're able to deal with the situations in their buildings while we're taking care of those things.
And the, the conversations that I've had with principals as part of my site assessments, when we discuss that part of it, is they all know and use school messenger, but understand that in those types of situations, they have expressed the gratitude that, they can put out a quick message, but they can't put it out in five different languages as needed. So if there's something quick they need to get out, they've all, you know, explained that they, they would do it and have done it. But on things like that, they appreciate that someone else is able to handle those things. So I think they understand they're empowered to do that, that's what they're asking.
I just want to say that for, for sure, however we word it, and I don't have the answer, but that the situation, if there was a situation which, if there's any kind of situation that was reported out as inside the building, regardless of what it said after, the words inside the building secured, that would, that would cause panic. Whether it was, you know, because of, you know, I don't know, because of a water leak, we have to pick up 10 minutes late and use the back door, as soon as that notice says inside the building issue, people are going to think the worst. So I don't know what the answer is for it, and it's, it sounds like it's, I mean, the one example that was mentioned, just related to a change of passing time, so it maybe wouldn't have had to be texted out at all, but that was just my only.
In that case, the message went out after the incident occurred, so.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate that in today's world, when things come out about something happening at a school, everyone thinks the worst. And everyone's heart stops and everyone fears that there's something terrible going on at a school, and, and people will feel that they need to leave what they're doing and run to their kid's school, when it could end up being nothing. But so many things are happening that everyone's first thought is something bad is happening.
All right. But I'm talking about when it's reported through the system, that we normally report security or secure the building, yes, through.
Right.
Yeah, oh, we have that. I just, I just wanted to share, I think that, that the language, getting things out in multiple languages is much more challenging, I think sometimes than people recognize. We had the situation where we were trying to put the letter out to the community recently, and one of our translators, we thought was translating, and that person was out ill. And so it's really all those pieces. I think that the, we're fortunate with Lily in the office because she can do some quick stuff for us. She isn't an official translator for the department, for the district, but she, she does some real quick, good work for us. But really being able to put out in multiple languages, and that's the piece that I want clarification on. I think it gets really, I've, I've stood there many times and thought, do we just put it out in English first and then figure, and then, then put the next part out, or is that being, you know what I mean? So, because sometimes we wait, and we wait a while.
Shouldn't be waiting.
What did you say Ed?
I said, we shouldn't be waiting. Put it out in English first and, and, and boilerplate on there in the other language is saying translation, you know, translation will follow.
Do we do videos?
If I don't speak English, at least I've got the, you know, it says that translation will follow.
Do we do videos, like short video clips of like, if, if people can't, if reading is not easy for them, like, do we have, we ever thought about that?
So for a while, my department didn't do it, but for a while, the ELL department had been doing messages in, audio messages for Somali families who may not read either English or Somali. But I, I don't think they've continued that.
But that's a lot faster.
Can you send a video clip?
Well, I'm just thinking too, like, I remember when we were dealing with the ICE situation. I remember thinking like, have John get on Facebook and like do a, sorry, John, I picked you. It's like, have you get on and like do a quick 45 second, this is what's happening. I don't know, just to, I, I think my concern is too, is like, there's so much, like you're saying, it moves so quickly. And I remember Rhonda and I were looking one night on Facebook, and like, there was like a message about something that had happened, that ICE was in our school, and they were, it was like, obviously not true, but it had been shared like 800 times with some of our students. And I'm, I'm, you know, blowing a gasket because I'm thinking, oh my gosh, all these students think this is true. How do we mitigate that?
And parents.
And parents thought it too.
Jamie?
So referring to the lockdown situations conversation, from a student perspective, so last year, there was a situation at West where we had a lockdown, and it wasn't made clear to us or whether or not it was an inside or outside situation. We were, I know I was in biology, we were put in a back lab, we had a substitute teacher. The other biology teacher came in, unlocked a door, told us all we had to get in now. And we had students crying, texting their parents, no one knew what was going on, and it was a really, really scary situation for the kids that was there, that were there. So I don't know if there's any way that, that can be better clarified to students to reduce the stress on them when it, it's an outside situation.
Yeah, sorry, I think it should be that.
Was that even a level of, that was that, was that even an event that called for people to be relocated within the building, or just to not exit the building?
Not in my classroom, but because of the, I know there was a shooting going on near the school. And so there are some classes that needed to be moved, but in my classroom, it was just a matter of, the teachers didn't know what was happening. The teachers didn't know if it was inside or outside. So they were doing.
So they prepared for the worst.
Yeah.
You're referring to when they had the, it was almost like a drive-by shooting that occurred right across the street?
Yeah.
So is that true that some, were some classrooms directed to relocate kids and some weren't, or?
I don't know what the school staff, I wasn't in, in control of the messages at that point, so I don't know what they were told. I don't know what the staff told their, or the admissions told their staff.
But that, to your point, Ed, is something that the principal could have been communicating with people.
You get as much information as you can without compromising the situation. In that situation, they should have told you exactly what was going on.
For that situation, I know a teacher was the first person to see it before the, like, the school called the police. Because it was right outside a teacher's window. So I don't know if that's why the situation wasn't properly taken care of. But it's still, I feel like there was, there was a lot of fear and the situation was handled a little messily.
Jamie, Mr. Dorf is right. What we should be doing in every situation like that is get on that P A and tell everything that we know.
Yeah.
In the old days, it used to be codes. Not anymore. Not anymore.
True.
I'm sorry that happened.
Yes.
We were looking for guidance, so thank you, Dr. Langenfeld, for asking, does the board wishes to move quickly and get a message out in English first, and then when we're able to follow up later with the translated?
So I don't, I don't know if the system allows us to do that, because how it works is that it automatically, I mean, so then if we were to do that, then probably the best way for us to do it is to just have it automatically translate, and it sends what it sends. So, you know, we've gotten messages back from our, like Luis Franco, who's our community family engagement coordinator, saying, you know, it's best to have it truly translated because, it's like when we read something that's in one language, we ask Facebook to translate it, it's not perfect English, and it's, you know, it's not perfect in their language either. But then, because we don't get to say, just send it in English, or just send it in Spanish, the way the system works is it automatically determines based on coding in Infinite Campus, who gets what language. So I can't determine English, Spanish, Somali. I can only send the message, I can have it automatically translate, Mung would not get it then, and we could send out that way, but that is a limitation of the system.
Okay, I'm not, you know, I'm not, it's not your fault, it's the system's fault, but we spend a lot of money on these systems, and if, if the system can't do what you needed to do, what we needed to do, then I like the, I like the system to get revisited, and I'm guessing for whatever companies these are, we're probably a pretty darn big account to them that they don't want to mess things up with, so maybe they can work a little harder on it. And that's they being the outside companies, the software vendors, not you. I want P R, I want all our departments to have the tools to communicate with, with families that they need. And I think, you know, a little, a little pressure from a big account that you're not quite getting the job done, and bidding time's coming up soon, maybe that would get some, we might be in the nice situation of having a 25,000 size account to be able to nudge some things along in a way that a, you know, 300 client account might not be able to do that, so I'd like us to take advantage of that when we can.
So I'm just going to add that, I think part of the reason for that is because the strength of the program is it feeds into our infinite, it talks to our infinite campus system, so that daily it's updating information. So every night, it rolls up information, so if I'm a parent and I change my phone number today, by tomorrow, my correct phone number will be the one that the system uses. So, so I appreciate what you say, and we've had success, and since when I was here, we were not able to send things in Somali or Mung. We've also put a lot of pressure on them to allow us to text in other languages. We did not have that opportunity before, we can now text in Somali as well as we can now do, translate Somali in emergency if we need to. I think the question is, is, in those situations, is that what you would prefer us to do? I mean, we have been, we have been trying to do the proper translation, and knowing we weren't going to have the Mung option if we, if we go that way. But if that's the preference is, we would prefer to do it faster and just hit the automatic translate, I mean, that's something that we can do.
Does it have to be one, one or the other, or can, can we follow up?
Well, we can always follow up. I mean, it's that, it's whatever that initial call is, right?
Put a tag on it.
But I can't do, I can't do a phone call of it though.
Saying that there will be a follow-up, and then test it, and then, you know, does that come across appropriately in Spanish, does it come across appropriately in Somali, you know?
Right, but we can't do automated phone call that way. And we have to have a translator for automated phone call. It will translate Somali and, and Spanish text messages, text messages and email, but there's no way to do a voice translation.
Okay, well then do it, test it with a text message then, just, just, you know, see what comes across, and then if it needs to be modified, test it out. But I think you need to get that information out there as quick as possible, and, you know, as I said before, let them know, and whatever means is necessary, that more information will be coming.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I can't, I can't send it in English first and then send it in other lang, the English would just get it again.
I get that.
Okay.
Brilliant.
But I think, I think if we do that, it's important to have conversation, or some sort of communication with our families that are now getting not perfect translations of the messages, to just explain, you know, why we're doing what we're doing, and it's weighing the, the speed versus accuracy factor. Because, I mean, then I'm comfortable just sending it out in English and letting the machine translate, just if, if it's a message that needs to get out quickly, yeah.
And so then we would not be reaching families who don't have, who don't have email, because I wouldn't, again, I need a translator to do the, the voice.
How many families do we miss because they?
So we miss about 1,500.
How many families do we miss because we have the wrong phone numbers?
Oh, yeah, that was, that was the point I was trying to raise. So that's why I just, I just want to be clear.
We're missing people no matter what communication device we, we use, I think. But at, at some point, what you also mentioned before, the, the, that you updated on Facebook and, and.
Website.
So it, so we, so the, the website, which is the same company that we have our website with, and a big piece of that was because of, it had the notification, the red alert notification message that could be put on every homepage. So again, we put it on the district page and then any school that's affected. We are also looking to move with that same company to an app, which we'd hope to have in by the end of the year. What the app would allow is for us to do push notifications using that same notification system we have now. So you can push out a phone call, a email, a text message, as well as a push notification to anybody who has the app. And what that allows then is for fam, and I believe, I have to double check, but I do believe it, you choose what language you want the app in, and so then you get the messages of the language that you've chosen. So again, it's like a Google Translate, it's not perfect translation. And then you, as the individual, can set up where you want notifications from. So you may say, I only want district notifications, you may say, I want one from every school, which I wouldn't recommend. Because, you know, I would hope that principals will be using that for, don't forget tomorrow's the PTO meeting, don't forget tomorrow's picture day, right? So like, people may not want everybody's message. But that, the purpose behind that is to help us with some of our community partners who have expressed concerns that they don't necessarily get notified when there's a secure the building situation. So, so mostly that affects like daycares that maybe pick up kids after school to take them to their daycare, and so then they may not know that there's a delay in school being released. And so they would then also have that information. Or it assists for families where maybe your child goes to more than one school, and so then you may, if your child is taking a class at one school, you may not get the message about that school being a secure the building because that wouldn't be, you're not in that calendar, right? And so then they could sign up for push notifications for that school as well. So, but that's, but that's going to take us a little bit of time to get that organized and rolled out, so it's a big.
So do you have what you need from us, or is it still kind of muddy?
Well, I think that part's good. We'll get the message out as quick as we can and translate as quick as we can.
And everybody's comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'll move forward with the, the last page, setting up a committee.
Yes.
To start taking a look at the program and also asking Dr. Stramp with Dr. Langenfeld's permission to move forward with the program evaluation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We have school safety policies and rules.
Last item on, uh, the teaching and learning agenda tonight is a series of 700 policies regarding, uh, school safety. These policies in large part are due to, um, the new legislation that came out this year regarding school safety as well as to codify what we're already doing here in the district. So we have the policies in front of you. Do you want me just to go, Katie, one by one?
Just go one by one and if people have questions or comments.
Okay. And, and just so that everyone knows that these policies, um, Chris had taken these policies to a school safety committee. They were reviewed by that committee, that committee provided input. Uh, we internally also, here in the district and with, um, principals and staff, also reviewed and provided input in these policies. So we are recommending, the first recommendation is that policy and rule 455 be repealed. The language from policy 455 has been included in policies 720 and 723. And rule 455 has just been renumbered to be rule 720. So that will be on your agenda for, uh, the board meeting to repeal, uh, those, that policy and the rule. Policy 720 is the health and safety in district facilities and program. And Christina, this reflects the language of the district's priorities with respect to safety in our school buildings and for our staff and our school and our community. The policy describes the district's overall safety program, including the roles and responsibilities of the safety coordinator and those statutorily required school safety teams that we had heard about before.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Your student. Um, under E two instructional staff requirements?
I'm sorry, say that again.
E two.
E.
Are you in the rule or the policy?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the rule.
The rule, okay.
720, mhm, sorry. And it, it, was this here before? And again, I apologize, I'm new here.
Yep.
So I'm learning. Where it says, "Teachers are expected to teach with the doors locked and cl-" was that there prior to?
This policy is, this rule is the exact replica of 455 rule.
I just didn't know if that was, if that was standard.
That's correct.
And when it says "expected to," that means all times, like, everybody, all the time.
During times of instruction.
During times of instruction, thank you.
Any other questions on policy and rule 720? Okay. Moving on to policy 722 is reporting injuries in unsafe conditions. This policy addresses the process for reporting injuries in unsafe conditions and workplace safety concerns for students, staff, and visitors. Again, just codifying, uh, what larger center practices. Jennifer Vincent in Human Resources, who deals a lot with our, uh, reporting of injuries and our workers' comp and other matters, also provided, uh, very valuable insight into this policy.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
Okay. Policy 723, school safety plans. This is part of the legislation, even before the recent updated to legislation, we were required to have, uh, school safety plans. And these school safety plans must address various statutory requirements. The policy addresses the statutory requirements and sets the procedures for implementation of that school safety plan review, update, adoption, and dissemination. It also sets forth the training requirements for school safety plans as required by the state law.
Questions, Brenda?
So that giant list of 71 things-
Yes.
Um, that, uh, says we have to have plans for, where are, where are those plans? Or where are the guidelines and procedures for all those things? Where, where are they physically located?
In the red binder, our red school safety binder.
So, and each school has those?
Multiple copies.
Multiple, okay.
And they're in class link.
And they're what?
In class link, you can find them.
Oh, okay, just, all right. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Brenda?
What is the parent-student reunification?
Parent-student reunification is if you have a, an incident where students are evacuating the building, you need to reunify the students with your parents. So they choose a site and then organize getting them back together.
I have one other question. Um, Chris, for newly hired employees, when they receive that orientation about the safety, school safety plan, who's doing that for them, with them? The principal?
I believe they get a piece of that during the new employee orientation, but then, um, when they get to their buildings, they are explained the processes of how they do their drills and how the ALIS procedures work.
By the principal?
Yeah, in most cases by the principal or whoever the safety point person is in their building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Move that one forward.
Policy 723.1, emergency drills involving students. This policy addresses the state law that requires public school districts to conduct various emergency drills involving our students. The policy provides further information regarding these drills as well, as well as the procedures for conducting those drills. And, um, I believe it was your last meeting where we brought forward the reports of those, uh, school safety drills that is now required to go to the school board for your review and approval as well. And that's, um, what's addressed here in this policy.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, move that forward.
Policy seven in rule 723.2, threats of school violence. Uh, the recently adopted school safety legislation created a new requirement that all school violence threats be reported to law enforcement immediately. In addition, schools are required to assess such threats and the proposed policy sets forth the district's process for implementing these statutory obligations. The rule provides the procedures for addressing threat identification, assessment, and response, including the, uh, purpose and goals of threat identification and assessment.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
Okay, and the last policy is, um, just in time for, uh, winter weather. 723.3, emergency school closings. From time to time, unfortunately, we have to close our buildings due to, uh, various emergencies such as weather or other health and safety concerns. And this proceed, this policy addresses the procedure for closing schools as well as the procedures for make-up time as a result of those closures.
Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
Thank you.
And that concludes the teaching and learning portion of the work session.
Thanks, Katie. Next, we have operational support and I'll be facilitated by Andy Becker.
Okay, under, um, human resources, we have, um, under discussion items, we have no items business, finance, or human resources. Uh, discussion and public comment, we have no items under business and finances. And we have, uh, employee benefits, uh, health and wellness. And I'm hoping we'll be able to go quite a bit under 45 minutes on here and focus on, it's important, but no, no immediate action is being requested right now.
Correct, that's correct. And we'll, we'll try to go through this because, um, uh, I know that you received a pretty lengthy, um, uh, memo that I sent out, which gives you a lot of the detail that this PowerPoint will not. Joining me at the table is Jennifer Vincent, the manager of Employee Services. And she and I will be tag teaming on presenting this to you. Feel free to ask questions and, uh, you know, if there's something I can't answer, I'll certainly get it to you. Um, we, we have a very comprehensive benefit program. And this is the first time, I think, we pulled it all together so that in one document you could see what we do offer employees. And to me, comprehensive means that at different times in people's lives, they're going to need different levels of benefits. And so, uh, as a large employer, we want to have a very comprehensive and, um, attractive benefit program that meets the needs of our employees, depending upon where they are in, in their, in their lives. I think that our, our benefits are very well received. And our spring, um, staff perception survey, uh, 85% of our employees strongly agreed, um, or agreed that they, um, are satisfied with their benefits, which is a very, very high number. Jennifer's gonna tell you a little bit about the Health and Wellness Center.
In, um, November of 2012, we opened the Health and Wellness Center. It's actually located here and it's operated by Pravea. And it's available for any of our, um, employees or retirees who are on the district medical plan to utilize. Um, you can see some of the information that we, we have there. It's basically another option for them to get, um, quick, efficient, and affordable care. And, um, it, it's pretty well utilized within the, the district. So the numbers that we have listed on here indicate the number of visits from a medical standpoint. We also utilize it in Human Resources for pre-employment as well. So moving on to personal health assessments. In 2014, we began offering consistently, uh, personal health assessments in, in collaboration with our health plan. We now have five years of data. And we have a cohort group of 2,289 employees and spouses who have participated all five years. It's a, a pretty good story to tell with it. Within this cohort, cohort group, we have a score that has, these people have aged five years, but their overall score has remained very stable, which is a, a very positive thing. And that these, um, score right now is 79.8, that's on a 100-point scale. But knowing that it started at 80.5 in 2014 is a pretty positive, um, positive thing that, that the health has stayed that, that well. We also have, um, the, the reports are confidential. We don't get anybody's results, but we have Bell and Do outreach to people who are tobacco users and people with certain health conditions. So each year, a number of letters go out to those individuals, offering them some additional, um, information as far as what's available to help them through that process. We typically have a, a three-month window in which people can have the, the personal health assessments done. And in this, this past year, we had over 90% of the people who participate in the medical plan take the, the health assessment. So again, a, a positive story. Also, there, there's questions, in addition to the biometrics and the measurements that are done, there's self-reporting questions. And we found that 89.3% of our employees have a primary care provider, which is, is very, it's a very high number. It's a great number. And 75.4 have had an annual physical. So we know that people are engaging in their healthcare. So a little bit about our medical plan. The medical plan is a self-funded plan, which means that we have a company, we currently utilize U M R. They pay the claims for us, but it's a district plan. And when they pay the claims, it's district money that is being utilized to pay the claims. So, um, they're, they're basically hired by us to, to do the administration side of things. So you can see on the slide, we have the total spend for our, the medical claims, the administration, and the pharmacy in the past year was, um, $42.6 million.
Other than salaries, this is the highest cost item that the district has on, in the budget.
Dental plan, again, we're self-funded with dental and that's administered by Delta Dental. Two unique aspects of our dental plan. We have smarter dental plans, which allows for additional cleanings for people who have certain medical conditions. We know that there's a correlation between oral health and overall, um, health of, of people. So the smarter, smarter dental plans, um, if people have certain conditions, they can get additional cleanings. They're covered as preventive care, there's no cost to the, the employee. So diabetes, um, pregnancy, certain cancers, things like that. We also have Checkup Plus, which, the, the Checkup Plus program, um, basically allows people to get their preventive cleanings and not have the cost of that go toward their annual maximum that they're allowed for, for expenses on the, the dental plan. So it's a, a nice way to, to allow people to get those cleanings, not have a count against them should they need anything else. Life insurance is administered by MetLife. Basic life is offered to all employees who, who, uh, work at least five and a half hours per week. It's provided by the district, no cost to employees. If they choose, they can purchase additional life insurance, voluntary life insurance for themselves. If they purchase it for themselves, they can also then purchase it for any family members, any, any dependents. With that, with, um, MetLife also offers will preparation services for people. And they also have travel insurance that's available, so some additional options for people. We have an income protection program that is, again, district provided. This is basically a district-provided short-term disability plan that all regular employees, again, working five and a half hours per week are eligible for. And basically, it's wage continuation should they medically be unable to, to work for a period of time. The short-term disability, the, the I P P can go for up to one year or until long-term disability, um, is approved, if, if long-term disability is applicable for the person. Our long-term disability is administered by the standard. We have a 90-day elimination period. So after 90 days, the long-term would kick in if, again, if eligible and if, um, the long-term disability is, uh, appropriate for the person. The, the aspect with long-term disability that I want to talk about is we have a workplace possibilities program that the standard offers. And what this is, is a program that allows, basically, we, we can get assistance from the standard to have people stay at work. They're really helping us keep people who have conditions that might otherwise put them off work, stay at work. And they'll come in and do an evaluation. They get, um, the, the approval from the employee to work with their doctors to find out what conditions they have, what, what might be the best solutions for them. And they will actually purchase the equipment and, and, or whatever it is, and bring it into the district. It then becomes district's property for us to, to use in the future should we have a need. Um, it's, it's been a very successful plan for us in, in the past. We have a, a number of people who have utilized it. We've been able to keep people at work through that, that program. And it's, it's been utilized, um, from educators, administrators, uh, across the board.
Our employee assistance program, we've been with Employee Resource Center for well over 15 years. And, uh, the, the, the part that I want to point out is that it's integrated with our medical plan. Our actual contract with E R C, um, says that if the employee goes to Employee Resource Center first and then is referred out to another provider, their, um, copay deductibles and co-insurance are waived. So it gives people an incentive to go in early to get help that they need. We added athletic trainer appointments, uh, this last month. And, uh, partnering with Bellin at the schools that you see listed here, our, any of our employees, uh, medical insurance is not required, can make an appointment with a Bellin athletic trainer for some of their musculoskeletal, um, issues. And musculoskeletal is probably our highest cost issue that we deal with. So this'll help people get, um, seek treatment earlier. What the trainers will do is they'll certainly refer out if necessary, but they may provide some, um, exercise, um, uh, for the individual and, um, guidance as, as to what they think is the issue. And we've had people already start to tell us that they, they've used this. And then we added, uh, retail clinics about, uh, two years ago. And this offers extended hours to our employees, um, hours that our, our clinic isn't open and the clinics that they may typically go to are closed and there's that $10 copay. We haven't had this used as much this past year. I'm not sure why, but we're gonna start to promote this a little heavier because it is a great way to get care, um, quickly when you need it. And then, um, Jennifer, talk about worker compensation.
Should we partner with Pravea Employer Services? So anytime we get an accident report from an employee, they'll reach out to that employee, um, on, on our behalf, help us with the, the process, talk the person through, should they have any questions about, um, whether or not they need care. Sometimes people don't realize they need care when they, they do. So we have a, a registered nurse who has that background and can assist people with, with, um, making that determination. Also helps me as far as, um, getting some of the documentation as far as whether somebody has work restrictions or whether they're able to come back to work. So we can keep that process moving, make sure we've got subs in place and have people in front of the, the kids at all times. Our workers' comp, which is used to, um, calculate our, our premium rate, is trending down. So we're, we're making some good strides.
And lastly, um, or the last things we, we offer is, uh, retire insurance education. When a person is looking at retirement, uh, healthcare is one of the major things that they're thinking about. And it's very complicated. What type of supplement should they get? Should they stay on the district plan? Uh, how do you, uh, register for Medicare? So we've been offering several sessions, um, once, sometimes twice a year. Our next session is actually this, this Wednesday. And we have somebody from M3 who's specialized in this to provide, um, insurance information for our retirees or people thinking about retiring. Finally, we're, next week, we'd hope to bring you some recommendations. Some of the things we're looking at, really, uh, the focus really is on making sure that employees have different access points where they can get the care that they need as soon as possible because that helps keep costs down. So we're looking to expand, uh, access points by partnering with Bellin. Um, Bellin is, um, willing to open our, their near-site clinics, um, and offer hours for our employees. Get in first day if they can. And, uh, it, the fee will be $70 per hour and they'll charge us in 15-minute increments. The other thing that we were looking at is Bellin would open their physical therapy to our employees. I think the cost is $92 an hour. And employees will be given a phone number- I think the cost is $92 an hour, and employees will be given a phone number specifically for our employees to call. The Bellin receptionist will know that it's our employees, and they'll make sure that they get in as soon as possible. We're looking at a weight loss program, too, that would be, people eligible to do this would have to meet certain criteria. Telemedicine is something that's relatively new in the Green Bay area, but not so new in some of the larger cities, where an individual can call up, speak to a doctor on the phone, and if appropriate, would be diagnosed, and medication or treatment would be offered, or referral if necessary. And then, finally, we are considering bringing to the board the elimination of the fees for our own clinic. The employees and their families currently are asked to pay $5. We'd like to eliminate any barriers to that, and so, we'd like to, next time you meet on the 19th, propose that we eliminate the fees. So, these would most likely be in the form of a motion, because they will have some financial impact, which we'll explain. The last thing is we'd like to brand our benefits, health and wellness, and that way it would be a logo, where when we offer any of these products or anything, or any services to our employees, it would be instantly recognizable, and that's the way sometimes companies will do that, when they have such a comprehensive program. And it is certainly an attractor. That being said, I should also make the board aware that because we offer a very robust plan, you can see how expensive it is just by looking at the cost of health insurance, should there be any need to reduce costs, this would be something that, you know, you would most likely look at. I do think that there are things that could be changed, that wouldn't necessarily be problematic in terms of affecting recruitment, but we do have one of the best plans around, as you can see, very comprehensive, meets the needs of our employees. And anecdotally, when we meet with our employee groups, they do tell us that.
Questions? Christina?
I appreciate you waiting till the end to give this, Jean. I think that your work around this is really awesome, and I would never want to vote to take this away. I think that our teachers and our staff are powerful role models for our students. They set the tone for health and wellness throughout our district and in our classroom. You know, schools are not only a place of learning, but they're also work sites, and we need to make that connection, because when our teachers are healthy, our kids are going to be healthy, and our community will be healthy. So, thank you for your work in this. I've also made the recommendation to Jean, started just having conversations, I know I talk about this all the time, and you'll be tired of me talking about the whole school, whole community, whole child model, but my recommendation to Jean, just when we were talking sort of about her work, was to move, to integrate, not move, but to integrate employee wellness into the larger conversation of wellness that we do around the district. I think if we can move into a more collaborative partnership to show that it's all interconnected, you'll not only get more buy-in, but will, the impact of the programs will be stronger as well. So, yeah, I look forward to those conversations, so thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Then, we have hiring of administration and staff policies and rules. So, we have employment of administration, policy 220.
If you recall at, it's late and I can't remember what month it was, that it was requested to bring forward the administrative hiring policies in November, so here we are. We had, Jean and I had the opportunity to meet with Ed and Brenda and Laura to review the language of the policies we're bringing forward tonight, and of course, when we peel open one policy, it implicates other policies, so that's why you see more than just the policies that were asked to be reviewed, and that's what we're bringing forward tonight. So, the first policy is policy 220, employment of the administration. This policy, it's connected to the recruitment, hiring, and assignment of administration, so this policy really was just placed in standard format and aligned so that the other policies that are going to be changed, that they were using the same language and put it in that standard format.
Any questions on this one? All right, I'll move that forward, and then recruitment, hiring, training, assignment of the administration, policy, and procedures for replacement, hiring, and transfer, policy 221.
Okay. This is the policy and the rule where you're going to see the largest majority of the changes. The policy and rule were placed into standard format. The language was revised in the policy that required the Board of Education to approve recommendations for administrative hires, to providing discretion to the Board of Education to making this, the decision to employ the recommended candidate. The policy and rule establish a process for filling vacancies through internal transfers of the hiring of an internal or external candidate. Notably, as requested in our meetings, the policy and rule requires stakeholder input for the filling of a vacancy either with an internal transfer or the hiring of an internal external candidate for all lead department administrators and site-based lead administrators. So, we're talking about building principals, executive directors, chief, the chief human resources officer, the chief financial officer, assistant superintendents, any of those lead department administrators. The rule clarifies the process for filling a vacancy with an internal transfer versus the hiring of an internal or external candidate. Again, provides for stakeholder input when filling the vacancies, and specifies a robust community input process for the hiring of internal, external candidates for those positions that I had just identified, and sets forth a detailed process for the hiring of internal and external candidates, and requires revisions of approved job descriptions be brought to the board for approval, and sets forth the process for conditional offers of employment.
Any questions on that? Brenda?
So, we're still receiving a hire to approve or not approve? As a board?
You mean a recommended motion would come before the board? Yes.
Right? Yes. You are the only body that can determine that.
Other questions? Okay, move that forward, and then we have Superintendent, Administrator, Managerial, Professional, Technical, Executive Assistant Staff Contracts, policy 222.
Yep. This policy was placed in standard format. It clarifies the process for employment of contracting with and non-renewal of administrators consistent with the state law. It delegates the authority to the superintendent of Schools and Learning to execute the contracts on behalf of the board. So, this is delegating the authority, once you have approved the contracts, to essentially use the stamp to stamp contracts. Otherwise, the board president would be required to hand-sign every single contract that comes, that is issued then after you have approved the contract. So, we need you to delegate that authority for the superintendent or designate to stamp the contracts. And then, it clarifies the licensing requirements for administrators and the consequences if an administrator were not to be licensed.
Any questions there? Does the, but the, so does this mean the superintendent manages the superintendent's own contract? Is that carved out separately?
That's carved out separately in the policy, yes.
All right. All right, any other questions? Can you move that forward? And then, staff recruitment, hiring, policy and procedures for staff recruitment, hiring, rule five, policy 533, rule 533R.
This policy and rule was placed into standard format, and these, this policy and rule was revised to provide the Board of Education with the discretion of whether to approve the contracts for hiring of staff. The previous language required approval, this language provides that discretion to the Board of Education. And then, this sets forth, the rule sets forth the detailed hiring process for internal and external candidates, requires revisions to approved job descriptions be brought to the board for approval, and provides further clarity for the process of hiring professional employees, those employees who require contracts under the statute 118.22, and sets forth the process for conditional offers of employment.
Okay, so this is entirely new, but based on discussions?
The rule is, the rule is new, we did not have a rule before, but it really just codifies, Andrew, what the Human Resources Department was doing and what the statute provides with respect to contracts for professional staff or certified staff.
Okay, so then, as far as the, okay, I had the rule open twice, and I see the strength that we were looking for, so, thank you. Any questions on 533? All right.
No, sorry. Just, it probably means just what it says, but just to clarify, the superintendent acting as the board's authorized agent may execute a professional employee's board-approved employment contract on behalf of the board.
It's the stamp.
See.
Yep. So, once you approve that contract, the superintendent can delegate or instruct the Human Resources Department to add Brenda's signature to the approved contracts.
Okay. The stamp. The stamp. Okay, never mind.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, that concludes the work session.
All right, so I would go entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? I oppose, we are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.